Yeah, and it's just like, I was like, what is wrong with this whole thing?
Yeah, but that's even when you see such a significant one. High school, the principal just come in over the summer. I walk in the lunchroom, there's those, the boys we know get in there, but the JV football team is in there and they're on the milk machine.
Those are kids, three years behind.
I'm like, I look at them, I'm like, yeah.
Twenty-five, out of my book of like twenty-five, thirty-four, forty-six, forty-nine hits.
If I look at them, they're like, yup, there's no way we're getting out of this.
And then this is at the end, I whittled it to fifteen.
Look at, you know, they're starting to look over here.
I'm like, stop looking at this. Well, I use, I can use speed bumps.
Cause I don't have all the stuff for using something.
That's good.
But it was still like, it was.
Um, okay, it is seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, I am Patty McCoyn, thank you so much for attending our meeting tonight. Um, it's a beautiful evening out, so we appreciate you being willing to engage with us. Um, I'm going to have the board members introduce themselves, I'll be standing on my left with Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, Sean Wilson.
Good evening, LaRonda Chastain, thank you so much for being here.
Good evening, Doug Brooks, thanks for coming out.
Good evening, Anupam Chigadu, thanks for being here.
Hello, everyone, I'm Lauren Christensen, welcome.
And Dr. Merritt, would you like to introduce yourself and your staff?
Good evening and welcome, I'd like to begin by introducing Ms. Diane Robertson, my assistant, and thank her for being here to take the minutes for us this evening. I'd like to ask the remaining members of the staff to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt, good evening, everyone, Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing, welcome.
Good evening, Kurt Tuskowitz, Executive Director of Student Services, welcome.
Hi, I'm Debbie Piaz, I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Good evening, I'm Beth Rail, Chief Academic Officer, thank you for being here.
Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Human Resources, welcome.
All right, we will stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are at letter A, which is adoption of the agenda and approval of consent agenda, which is action item twenty-two oh six ninety-one, I am looking for motion.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda, action item number twenty-two dash zero six dash ninety-one.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Members Sedu and seconded by Member Brooks. Uh, Dr. Merritt, will you take us through it, please?
Thank you, President McCoyn, this evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions, since our last time together, we are busy hiring champions. I'm so happy when I walked in this room and saw the faces among us who are committed to our students and their success, and I'm excited to welcome you onboard. We also have resignations and tenure recommendations for those teachers that have met the requirements to earn tenure in the state of Michigan. We have the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on Ju- June the fourteenth, and the final reading of the following policies, eighty-four hundred, School Safety Information and Policy, eighty-five hundred, Food Service.
All right, um, I will call for the vote, all in favor say yes, yes, any opposed say no. All right, uh, Dr. Vartanian Gibbs.
Thank you, President McCoyn, first, I would like to introduce you to five new champions, um, who are going to begin this upcoming school year on August twenty-ninth. So if you are here, if you can stand up when I call your name, Allison Crissellis. Allison is going to be working at, oh, you can stay standing, you can practice that, cause you'll be standing the whole time with the position you accept it. Cause she accepted to work in our early childhood program, so we know she will never be sitting. And she's gonna be one of our teachers in the early childhood program, working with children, um, who have IEP, so welcome, Allison. Tracy DeJean, she is going to be our new school nurse, and Tracy really has been helping the school nurses all school year, um, supporting them as a substitute school nurse, and I'm, I'm really excited to bring you onboard, congratulations. Angela Frank is our new social worker here in the district, congratulations, Angela. And next, we have Roshan Parmali, she is gonna be our new counselor at Workman School, we've been looking for you for months, so, thank you. So this position's been posted for a long time, so thank you so much. And Athena Swaski, Athena is going to be our new ASD teacher at Tonda School, and she has been in that role as a substitute teacher for, um, all of spring, and now it'll officially be her classroom, starting in the new school, school year, so congratulations to all of you. After I introduce, um, the next new employees to our district, you can all come up and Beth will help me get your candy bar to you. Okay, so, yeah, we've been, um, very busy hiring some additional champions for our school district, and they are starting soon. And Anne, the first one I'm going to introduce you to, Anne Whatstone, has already started, she is being recommended as the dietitian coordinator at the administration building, this is very exciting, she has a Masters of Science in Dietetics. She has served as a food service manager, a registered dietitian, and she's also an American Sign Language interpreter. It is very hard to secure a Masters of Science in Dietetics, so congratulations on receiving that degree, and thank you for choosing our district. Next, I would like to introduce you to Kristy Bicee. So Kristy is going to be recommended as the elementary student support specialist at Byrd Elementary School. She has her Masters Degree from Michigan State University in Special Education, she's been a classroom teacher and a resource room teacher. I was lucky enough to serve on her committee, and after I met her, I knew we needed a summer school teacher in the ASD program, so I recommended her, and she's already working, right? Okay, in a couple of days. Thank you, congratulations and welcome, thank you. Stephanie Nemany, welcome Stephanie, Stephanie, Ms. Stephanie Nemany is, is being recommended as the elementary student success specialist at Dotson Elementary. And she comes to us with a Masters of Arts in Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and she has a K-12 Ed Leadership Degree. She has been a teacher, a principal, a curriculum coach, and assistant superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, welcome, thank you for choosing us. Next, I would like to introduce you to Chandre Patway. Chandra, Chandra, I will get that right, I promise you. So Chandra Patway is being recommended as the elementary student success specialist at Hoben School, and she's coming to us as, from Van Buren Schools, cause I know that Pete Kulak did not wanna lose you, he actually texted me. Anyways, um, she has been a reading interventionist and a classroom teacher in that school district, she has a Bachelor's Degree in Psychology and Social Work that I thought would be really unique in this position, and also a Masters Degree in Curriculum Instruction, so welcome. Next, we have Shannon Bartley, she's returning to PCCS, she is going to be the elementary student success specialist at Miller School, she was a classroom teacher with us for years, and then, um, took a break, little break to do a couple other things, and she decided to come back. She's been a literacy coach, a media teacher, and she has a Masters in Literacy and Education, welcome back, Shannon. Next, now you, Chandra, so we, we have two almost the same, so this is Chandra Jones, and I have heard a lot about Chandra from your new supervisor, Tracy, and you are being recommended as a supervisor of Special Education, welcome. You have a Masters in Special Education from Wayne State University, Chandra has been a classroom teacher, a five oh four coordinator, a special education supervisor, and a teacher consultant, thank you for choosing us. Dante Dorsey, Dante is going to be the new dean of, let me start over, Dante Dorsey is being recommended as the dean of student support at East Middle School, the home of the Rockets. He has a Masters from EMU in Social Foundations and Curriculum Education, he's been an intervention specialist and a school climate specialist from Ann Arbor Public Schools. So, welcome Dante, thank you so much for choosing Plymouth Canton Community Schools. So did I get everyone? Okay, you guys, congratulations, we're so happy to have you. So at this time, we're going to try to find you, and some people will help, um, pass out these candy bars, we so appreciate it that you, um, selected Plymouth Canton Community Schools. This is my last meeting where I get to introduce new hires, and I'm so proud, this is the last group of new hires I am introducing, so welcome, thank you.
You need help with the candy bars?
He has to eat the candy, right?
Oh, I meant to say.
Oh, you want to eat that, you don't want to really help.
Oh, their names are on them. You look at them, they're really cute.
You save, you save the package forever, like you put on your, cause so many of your hire day.
I had mine from five years ago, the whole candy.
You have the whole candy, I ate the candy.
I did not eat it.
It is official.
Your fish on.
All right, uh, so now we are on, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, now I'm going to share with you all of our teachers in our district who will receive tenure after this evening's board meeting. These teachers have completed five years of successful teaching in our district, and I'm going to read you their names. Alicia Thayer, classroom teacher at Byrd, Zaina Genowee, classroom teacher at Dotson, Sarah Gilken, classroom teacher at Erickson, Catherine Dean, classroom teacher at Field, Emily Ingle, classroom teacher at Field, Nicholas Avaco, classroom teacher at Field, Brittany Esker, classroom teacher at Hoben, Kelly Broderick, classroom teacher at Halsing, Alora Kane, classroom teacher at Halsing, Amy Randazzo, classroom teacher at Halsing, Sarah Lemieux, classroom teacher at Isbister, Rebecca Zander, classroom teacher at Isbister, Carly Merrick, classroom teacher at Miller, Clara Lasota, history teacher at Canton High School, Andrew Ross, health teacher at Canton High School, Darren Way, Spanish teacher at Canton High School, Kelsey Bowles, math teacher at Plymouth High School, Lindsay Curso, CI teacher at Plymouth High School, Erica Powell, history teacher Plymouth High School, Stephen Rooney, chemistry teacher Plymouth High School, Joe Willis II, English teacher at Plymouth High School, Kevin Palmer, health teacher at Salem High School, Spencer Shorrer, biology teacher Salem High School, Ashley Klein, language arts teacher Discovery Middle School, Darlene Swalick, language arts teacher, teacher East Middle School, Christina Wing, she is a teacher at, um, East Middle School, and she does project-based learning, Patrick Derusho, math teacher West Middle School, and Robert Watson, language arts teacher West Middle School. So congratulations on all of these teachers for five successful years of teaching and receiving tenure, thank you.
All right, thank you, um, and for the new hires, thanks for choosing us. Um, so the next section is Be Celebrating Success, uh, this is PCF students working with Wayne County Commission Youth Council, Member Chastain will be, um, doing the award, and we do have also with us tonight, our Wayne County Commissioner, Melissa Dobbs.
So I'm super excited, always, this is one of the best parts of meetings for me, not that I get to do them all the time, but we just introduced champions who chose our district, but we also have champions who are students in our district, so I have the honor and the privilege of, um, reading, uh, tonight, celebrating success. So celebrating success this evening will honor PCF students, and I'm gonna say the names right, if I get them wrong, I am okay with being corrected, because I think saying a person's name is to honor them. So, Kavia, Kavia, thank you, Kavia and Munib, did I deal with that right? Did I say it right? Thank you, all right, so these two amazing PCF students have been working tremendously hard with the Wayne County Commission Youth Council during the past few months. The Youth Council was formed by the Commission in twenty-twenty, and is dedicated to promoting youth education, community involvement, and civic interaction. The goal is to bring together a diverse group of young people to assist in planning, developing, and implementing activities and services that help young people become socially responsible community members. One of the resolutions that you, one of the resolutions that the Youth Council members have worked on this past year is a gun violence resolution. The Gun Safety Plan calls for more preventative actions, like requiring a gun lock to be purchased with a gun in order to limit access to minors of all ages, increasing mental health resources in schools, making students feel more comfortable with reporting potential threats, and dedicating one day every school year for students and parents to learn about gun safety. The resolution was voted on and passed by the Wayne County Commission, and will now be sent to Wayne County's delegation in the Michigan Legislature, the state superintendent, and the school boards in each Wayne County District. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would love to and excited and am delighted to present to Kavia and Munib with Stars Awards for Students with Tenacity, Achieving and Reaching Success. We thank you for your dedication to your school, community, and the hard work you're doing to ensure safety of all of our students and our families, so thank you so much, come on up.
I would just like to express my gratitude to the school board for, um, recognizing our efforts, um, to try and create a safer environment for our peers, thank you.
I'm at sure.
Thank you, Kavia and Munib, um, for all your hard work, and congratulations.
All right, so they've gone out for some, yeah, um, I'm, I'm pretty sure that Mr. Brandon would also like the families in the pictures. Pretty sure.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
All right, so they're taking the pictures, and I, I just want to mention while we're waiting also in, before we move on, um, the city of Plymouth, the Plymouth Township Police, and the Canton Township Police all have gun locks, they are willing to hand to people who come in and ask for one.
At no cost.
At no cost, it's, it's a free service, um, and you do not have to be a resident, they will just hand it to you. All right, um, so next up is Board Committee Reports in Action, and first up is the President's Report. So, um, we've had kind of a lull since school is ended at this point, we've had our regular committee meetings, um, so I'm also ending my tenure as President of the School Board, this is my last meeting doing this. Um, it's been a challenging two years, cause I've done it for two years, um, but I would like to thank Ms. Sedu, who's been the Vice President for the past two years, um, and the rest of the board members for all of the support, their willingness to serve the students and families of our district. Um, it has been challenging two years for us, um, we have our highs and we have our lows, I mean, it's, it's always great, we just had the graduation, which is a really high point of the entire year, um, fantastic. And then, of course, the celebrating success also, when we see our fantastic students, is also a huge high point of our year. Um, so during the past couple of years, we were able to complete our Dynamic Plan, which will guide our district for the next several years, um, and on our mission of providing excellent educational services to all of our students in the district, um, we've been able to provide more support for the students, um, physically, emotionally, mentally, and academically. Um, the board has been pretty cohesive in our vision for providing an excellent education for all of our students. Um, we've passed some policies that protect some of our more vulnerable and marginalized students, um, and at the same time, we've seen some horrific acts of racism and hate directed towards some of our more vulnerable and marginalized students. And, um, while we've done some things to try to address this, we certainly are not done with that work, we have a lot to go, um, and we will still, we're committed to that work over the next several years. Um, and, and part of that, Mr. Wilson has brought forward, and we've started the, um, Committee for the Student Voice in Action to get more input from our students. Um, and then our students have also been affected by the gun violence in other communities, which has spilled into their lives in an unfortunate way. They've lived through a pandemic a couple of years, um, and that has interrupted their schooling, so it's been challenging for everybody, um, but still, they move on. And so I would like to thank the, of course, the board members that are here now, and the board members that served prior to this, during my tenure, and of course, Dr. Merritt and her staff, who have, um, they answer our questions, and they give us the information we want, and also, I'd like to thank the entire staff of the district, because they continue to go above and beyond to support the students and families of our district. So, thank you so much, and it's been, um, challenging but rewarding to serve, so, thank you. And then next up, we have Student Performance and Achievement Committee with, uh, Ms. Sedu.
Thank you, President McCoyn, we have not had a meeting since our last, uh, board meeting here, but we do have a meeting scheduled August third, here in the boardroom at five PM, I encourage everyone in the community to attend.
And, um, then it is the Policy Committee, we met tonight at five-thirty, um, we went over, um, we talked about procurement for federal funds, we looked at a policy from Ann Arbor, and we're going to, um, bring that back for some more discussion, um, we did wellness, um, we talked about some of the definitions that need to go into some of our, our, like our bylaws at the beginning, um, bullying and aggressive behavior towards students, and then just some cleanup of the personnel files. So, um, currently, we do not have another meeting scheduled, it will most likely be the second board meeting in August, however, and still down at the end of the hallway, outside Ms. Rail's office at five-thirty, most likely. Uh, next up is the Finance and Operations, and are you doing it, Mr. Brooks? Fantastic.
Hi, I'm Doug Brooks, I'm filling in for, uh, Member Ke Ho, who's on vacation, um, last Thursday, the twenty-third, uh, we had our, um, Finance and Operations Committee meeting, which, which we, um, approved of our prior minutes, and talked about key performance indicators, um, for the custodial and transportation, and also financial statements, uh, as of May thirty-first, uh, the fiscal year of two, uh, twenty-one and twenty-two final budget, also the twenty-two and twenty-three, um, budget option, uh, adoption. And, um, we also talked about the radio station equipment upgrades, RFP, uh, award, and, um, Discovery Middle School, uh, emergency replacement, we talked about that, um, and also the bid package, EL two, electronic, electronic building sign purchase, uh, the district-wide trash recycling, RFP award, and the process of application of citizens on the committee. Would you like to, uh, add anything more?
No, just that a, a lot of the topics that we did discuss at our last meeting are actually on tonight's agenda as well, so.
Right.
All right, thank you, and then next up, we do have the Student Voice in Action Committee with Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, President McCoyn, um, so SVA is, is really keeping the momentum going, we met, uh, June twenty-second, right here in this boardroom, by the way, all the chairs do swivel, three sixty, we did test that out, uh, as a committee, and we can attest to that. Um, but, but really, the, the committee is finishing up the, um, committee scope of work, if you will, the description, that's in line with all of the other committee, uh, descriptions, so the, the students have done a good job of benchmarking and, and, uh, really going through that, um, so I would anticipate that would be done, uh, probably by our next meeting, uh, Member Christensen is helping to, to lead a subcommittee with the students on that, so thank you for that. Um, additionally, they're focusing on the application process, uh, not just for the students, but also for the community, so as with all board-level committees, there will be an opportunity for community, uh, community members to apply, go through an interviewing process, and then serve, uh, on the committee as well. We, uh, reviewed the timeline, we're still on track for a September, October launch, uh, everyone feels comfortable with that. Also, they would like, uh, Nick Brandon to join us at the next meeting, uh, once scheduled, to start to work with the students on their communication, uh, strategy for the, for getting out the application and, and whatnot, so they're hoping you can bring some of your expertise to the table to help guide them. Um, and just the other thing I would say, this is really turning into a amazing learning opportunity for them, from learning about, you know, Robert's Rule of Law, to Open Meetings Act, why we can do certain things, why we can't do certain things, uh, so just, you know, it's, it's been a lot of fun to watch them absorb, uh, you know, that, that information and that education, uh, that's going into it, all during their summer, uh, summer, summer break, so kudos to the students. Uh, next date is to be determined, uh, so we'll be posting it.
All right, thank you, and next up, we are on to letter D, Administrative Reports and Recommendations, up first is Dr. Merritt with the Superintendent's Report.
All right, I'll be briefed this evening, as we have a lull in the school year, we are busy around central office, finalizing budgets, which you'll look or consider this evening, um, continuing to hire, as you've done earlier this evening, and evaluating our data, so that we can really position ourselves for programs and supports for students for the upcoming school year, and so that is an opportunity this evening as well, is to take it, a, a look at our data for the year. Um, with that being said, just want to continue to thank the administrative team for the work, uh, last few weeks, could, working on really our dynamic plan, action plans, remember our conversation, instead of doing plans for the full five, six years, we want to chunk it down each year, so we have that opportunity to say, these are our priorities and our focus areas as it relates to the plan, at the end of the year, being able to evaluate the success, looking at the metrics that we've established, and then set our goals as we move forward to the next year. So that work will continue throughout the summer, um, as we are doing this work this summer, I also, uh, would be remiss without sharing my gratitude and thanks to our community, um, throughout the summer, just watching these projects that are unfolding for the twenty-twenty bond, we don't have an opportunity to celebrate enough that investment in our students and their learning environments, and want to thank the board for that continued support of these, um, bid packs that are coming forward, you have some more for consideration this evening, so watching that auditorium come alive, and watching the, the, the building signs and the furniture, and just the investment, um, for our students, I'm very excited about that. So continue to, uh, draw the attention on Bond Thursdays, Mr. Brandon, we'll keep that going throughout the summer, so we can really just showcase that investment, um, in our students and their environments. Uh, finally, this weekend, even though we're done with school, I had the, uh, pleasure of opening up my email, maybe some of you have as well, and I had notification that we are still congratulating students, these are students from the class of twenty-twenty-two, recent graduates, Amelia Trulong and Norra, Norvira Lone. They are from our Culinary Arts Program under the leadership of Diane Woodward, and they were named national champions and award winners at the recent Skills USA Championships. So when you look at these championships, they are part of a national conference, they're highlighting the achievements and the importance of trade programs, and this is really the culmination of a rigorous competition process that was going through April, um, in which they went to Grand Rapids for the qualifying event. So they are national winners among five thousand state championship winners across all trade competitions, so we just want to continue to applaud not only our students, but also Ms. Woodward, because she has just incredible excellence as an educator, and this has been seen, um, as we see her teach hundreds and hundreds of students the skills to learn how to run successful restaurant programs. And our own program here that she runs at the Salem Rock Cafe, I know that most board members have been there, community members, if you had an opportunity, it's just amazing, it gives that chance for students, if they wish to pursue a career, um, in the culinary field, they're, they're practicing, and they're actually serving the community, and. And Ms. Woodward is nationally recognized as a part of this competition this year for her work at the national competition. She won the gold medal for high school restaurant mentoring and advising. So we think about our dynamic plan and that goal, to be a nationally recognized innovator, that's happening with our teachers, with our students, putting themselves on the map and continuing to showcase, showcase the excellence that we have for our students. So congratulations again to the culinary program for these amazing honors. And that is it for me.
All right, thank you. So now, we are on to Finance and Operations with Ms. Piaz.
Thank you very much. This evening, we have the Key Performance Indicators, KPIs, for our custodial services, and with us this evening are Kyle Fellenbaum and Todd Fleming from ABM, and our own Rich Welsh, the manager of operations. Thank you very much. These were presented at the FNO meeting last June 23rd, and will be discussed here as well. Todd?
Good evening. Thank you once again for having us to discuss the key performance indicators for the last quarter. This quarter would be, would include the months of March, April, and May. So as you can see, our KPI data has improved quarter after quarter in both quantity and average inspection scores. In quarter three, we conducted over 1,200 inspections with an average inspection score of 89%. As ABM increased staff over the last quarter, it allowed the managers to accomplish more inspections, as seen by the chart. This particular chart represents the average inspection score of the past three quarters. As you can see, steady increase in quality has been maintained as we added more staff over the three quarters. This, this graph, it's a bit of an eye chart, it represents the average inspection score per building. Our target average score is 90%, and 17 buildings exceeded that target. Last quarter, we had 12 buildings that exceeded our 90% target. Of the three schools that fell below the 80% target, Holstein increased from 74% in quarter two to 78% in quarter three. Salem increased from 63% in quarter two to 77% in quarter three. However, Erickson slipped from 77% to 74%, mostly due to staff turnover and staffing This graph represents the number of inspections performed in each building. Again, over 1,200 conducted this quarter. Our target for quarter three was at least 10 inspections per building, which was accomplished at all CCS buildings. As displayed in our, in the graph, our management team focused the most inspections at student buildings, while the fewest were performed at adult or operational support buildings. Last of the eye charts, these are the average inspection scores by area, with the highest scores listed at the top of the graph and the lowest scores at the bottom. Common areas and areas with heavy foot traffic had the lowest scores this quarter. They are the most difficult to keep clean, as the floors shine and wax begins fading after salt and normal wear and tear in the buildings. Training concentration in those areas will be taking place during the summer clean. Now, to break down those scores a little bit further, this chart depicts, this chart depicts the top 10 deficiencies from the quarter. Looking at the chart, five of, five of the 10 top deficiencies from the last quarter are related to floor appearance. As mentioned earlier, floors have been under a bunch of stress throughout the school year. We will use the summer clean to restore the flooring and address the remaining, and address the remaining top deficient items. With this chart, it shows the average inspection score, which is the origin line, of the top 10 deficient items reviewed on the previous slide. The blue columns show the number of times those items were actually inspected.
With the missed task for Google, our Google Doc form, that is our own internal way of checking with our teachers and staff, I believe there was a few factors that went into the decrease in the Google Doc, Google Doc activity sheet. First, there was an increase in staff and consistency in the staff, being able to stay and really get to know their buildings and know the areas that they need to make sure they're addressing. Second, with the increase in staff, it has really allowed the managers time to train and retrain the staff. Also, there has been less PCCS staff cleaning stipends issued as well, on, on a whole, so that is a positive. People are happy with what's going on in their buildings and their classrooms.
Our, our staffing situation has improved greatly over the months. With the increased staff, it has allowed the managers time to train and retrain employees, start to reduce missed tasks from quarter one. Most of the missed tasks on our Google Doc, I'm sorry, I read the wrong slide. Here's our staffing levels as of 6:20. As of today, our FTE count is at 92. Our turnover increased slightly, but it is still lower than previ, than pre-COVID rates. With our staffing levels increasing over the last quarter, we have been able to focus on the quality of employee. Some of the turnover in quarter three is considered positive turnover, as we were able to let some of our underperforming staff go as more staffing are being hired. So our goals for the fourth quarter, staffing, and these are in no particular order, staffing, it will always be on this list. We will always continue to hire and staff. We will continue with our employee training. We're going to focus on areas of improvement, specifically hard surface, common areas with heavy, with the heavy foot traffic. And lastly, and again, not in any particular order, a successful summer clean to welcome the students back to nice, clean, welcoming schools. Any questions?
Mr. Brooks?
I have no questions.
Ms. Chestang?
Yeah, I got to get back to the slide that I was looking at. I'll be brief, because I appreciate the improvements that are being made, and recognize that staffing sort of just contribute to it, but there is improvement happening, you know, quarter over quarter. The ones that concern me most is the lack of attention given to hard surfaces. While we have COVID sort of under control, it hasn't, it's, it's still around. Go ahead.
So, so the hard surfaces that we're having, we're struggling with are the floors?
It's just the floors, okay.
Yeah, hard surfaces just considered floors, and that is really the salt that has been beating us up.
Got that part.
Because it's over the three year, you know, and the, as you get in through the school year, the luster and the wax really shows, starts to show.
I completely get that.
So that is what the hard surface is for, it's not countertops or anything.
So when we say desks, countertops cleaned and sanitized, when we say top 10 deficits is item number three in the third quarter, that's?
That is addressed, something that we need to address. That is smudges left on tables, or not cleaning, you know, that is 100% a focus of ABM and ourselves.
Okay. I get the floors, right?
Yep.
My floors are a little scuffed up too, so if we, I'm working on it myself. That's all. I just wanted to bring that, that was a, that was a concern for me, but thank you.
Ms. Christensen?
No, we, I just, I guess, as in summary for my fellow board members, we talked, we discussed this at FNO last week, and a few things were, you know, lifted in that meeting. Certainly, we're getting close to being, our meeting that full-time employees number, which was encouraging, but, you know, our partners with ABM assure us that they're going to continue to aggressively hire, so that we have that backup staff, and that we can continue to see improvements in clean. I know, I think another thing that we highlighted at our meeting on Thursday was the, the three schools with the lowest scores was lifted in that conversation, and that was due to turnover, and I think that we're, again, seeing some positive increases, you know, quarter over quarter there too.
Ms. Sedoo?
Thank you. I want to echo Member Chestang's feedback in terms of, it's nice to see the improvements heading in the right direction. In terms of, I get what Member Christensen said with the staff turnover, I do wonder about the inspections, when I look at Erickson getting about 25 and Tonda getting about 70, is that because there are no staff to do the inspections?
No, it's, it's, it's how it's been. It, it, no, not necessarily. The, the managers who do the inspections will, you know, they, they happen to be in that building, they got some time, they'll do an inspection. If we think that, or, or the account manager thinks, you know, during the course of a quarter, that a particular building needs some more inspections, they'll talk about that and, and assess that as it goes.
So what are you, what are you going to do in the fall to balance that out? Because there's a huge discrepancy between some of the buildings getting, you know, really low inspection scores and some that are really high.
We'll, we'll, we'll address that. The manager is still, you know, kind of struggling getting, getting the, the zone managers to balance that out.
Okay.
We'll, we'll continue to get there.
Okay. I appreciate that. And my last, is more of a general wondering, has there been any feedback that we've gathered, and this is for Dr. Merritt or anyone else, general feedback from students and staff about the cleanliness this year? I see the Google Docs is showing that staff are happier, there are improvements, but what's the overall general feeling from our students and staff?
So I think the most recent anecdotal information, if you'd call that, would be our K-12 survey, so we still know that this is just an area of struggling. So although we're talking about increasing, that's still an area that's a challenge for us by all means. I think that the work that we've done with our grievance committee, and they're meeting monthly and going through the Google Docs, has been a really helpful process in decreasing, because we're able to narrow in on the issues, and so that's where I think you would see, I wouldn't use the word happy, but I would think that improved satisfaction among staff is what we're experiencing. When you see the reduction of cleaning stipends, that our staff stepped up because they had to fill in the gap, and now not having to do that, so that's showing that satisfaction with the task getting met by our partners and our internal people, so, meaning our plant engineers, so I think that those are indications that we're headed in the right direction, but of course, still having work to be done. I think a piece that was brought up this evening is the increase in hiring now has the ability to evaluate people out. So for the first couple of quarters, because we were so short, I think we were still struggling with performance issues, and now we're able to replace those non-performing, ABM is able to replace the non-performing staff members and really meet the quality or the standard that we have established for the district. So definitely, I am pleased with the increased performance, and I think that, to answer your question, we're seeing that in terms of our feedback from staff. Now, students, I would still say the biggest complaint from students is bathroom issues, and so those are issues that are being addressed through that internal chair. Ms., do you want to add any more to that?
No, so we are, you know, still having a crew go around the park, so we have two people assigned to every single building, Plymouth, Salem, and Canton, and their sole job is to go around and to do the bathrooms continuously during the school day, and so ABM staff is, is helping to assist with that also. But, and we're addressing student behavior where it needs to, as well as, you know, a security presence and an administrative presence in the hallways as well. So all three of those contribute to a higher satisfaction in the bathroom area.
I appreciate that. Thank you. That's it for me.
Mr. Wilson?
A great succinct presentation, thank you for that. The only thing that really stood out to me in a positive way was that it seems like the number of inspections went up significantly, yet the scores went up simultaneously. So I think that that was a really good indication, you know, as we all know, often when the number of inspections go up, you might see a dip, because you're, you know, able to catch more, but in this case, the, the scores continue to rise, so kudos to you guys for that. It seems like we're trending in the right direction.
So on Slide 7, where you had the average score per area, is, are those, is that an aggregate? No. Right here, is this an aggregate of, because it's like mailroom loading deck? Is this from?
So that would be all of quarter three from any of the mailrooms that were inspected.
So it's all of, all of them?
All, yeah, all buildings, yes. District-wide.
All right. Because it wasn't clear from that where that was actually going? And then, I just, my, because everybody got the other questions, was it Member Chestang had said about, like, the desks and counters? Also, I noticed, like, sinks, you know, that's another thing that needs to really be clean, because you've got the kids washing their hands, and, like, those have to be cleaned and sanitized, or else there's probably not much point in having them.
The, the summer clean provides us, it, it's, it's an excellent vehicle to provide training in those areas. You know, people go through and, and do their cleaning, and then a manager comes behind them and inspects it each and every room, manager actually has to sign off on it. So if something is found insufficient, a countertop or a sink, the manager grabs those folks, brings them back in, shows them how to do it properly.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody have anything else? All right, thank you so much. All right, so now we are on to 2021, 2022 Final Budget Amendment Presentation. Ms. Piaz is very excitedly making her way up there.
This is the culmination of a lot of work, and I have a lot of people to thank. Devin Kling is here as well from my staff, but this is budget season, so it's all things budget. This one is for the year we're sitting in, so the 2122 budget was originally adopted by this Board of Education on June 8th, well, actually, public hearing was June 8th, 21, and then voted on on June 22nd, 21. Mid-year amendment was January 25th, 22. So it's been a long, long year, and this is the culmination of that work to amend the budget prior to June 30th, as required by the Uniform Budgeting Act. So we're going to concentrate on our comments this evening on the General Fund, but included in the board agenda tonight is a budget book, we call it, and then it lists all the different funds of the school district, including the General Operating Fund. We're going to concentrate for a moment on the General Fund and the fund equity in the General Fund, but all funds are represented in that budget book, included in the agenda. Tonight, we'll compare and contrast the actual audited statements or results in that first column on the left, that's 2021 actual, then the fiscal year original budget, the mid-year amended budget, and now the final amended budget. And I'll just concentrate my comments on what's changed since the mid-year. And so the local source revenue, the big change there is, we collect or are reimbursed for 100% of real property taxes, but not personal property taxes. So personal property taxes would be, if you have a commercial business and you have some equipment, you pay a personal property on that. Schools in the state of Michigan only receive those dollars or only are allowed to recognize those, that revenue in the year of receipt, and so we have a little adjustment at the end of every year for personal property taxes. The state source revenue increased slightly, a million, almost a million five, because of the MIPSers credit offset, that's the 147A and 147E funding that is received by the state of Michigan. It's based on actual payroll from the previous September 30th, because as you know, the state's fiscal year is different than the Michigan Public Schools. Our year is June 30, their year is 930. So they do a year-end adjustment for that, and that's what the million five is, primarily in state source revenue. The intermediate source revenue had an increase of about a million two in the budget, and that was primarily due to one-time money we received from Wayne Risa, a payment of almost a million five for the 1920 school year. So every year, they go through and do a reconciliation process of their act $18. They found they had some additional dollars for budgets not spent through the county, and then reallocated that to all those school districts in the county. So basically, overall, our revenue has increased about 2.3, almost 2.4 million dollars. On the expenditure side, you are a service business, so as you know, salary and benefits play about 80 to 85% of every dollar you spend here. And so the movement from federal ESSAR ARP funds, that's the American Recovery Plan, we were able to move some of those salaries that qualified for that plan into the ESSAR III funds, and so that's the reduction in instruction. And then the Support Services category is in- And then the support services category is increased, but primarily for, um, uh, uh, increases in some of the credits that we gave, uh, for the ABM staff we did not have were used to offset some of the staff cleaning stipends, but those cleaning stipends were about the same amount as the credits. And so that was an, 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 an amount. And also transportation had fifteen suspended routes, but we didn't have to pay as much. The budgets were, um, adjusted to reflect those changes at the end of the year. So basically, year over year, um, we went from about a six-point-five, um, deficit or planned use of fund equity to about a six-point-four-nine-five. If you take out the pilot drive purchase that approved by the Board of Education, um, and, um, was closed on May twenty-third, that, um, really planned use of fund equity, aside from pilot drive, was just shy of three million dollars. So that really, in all in all, is your structural deficit. Your, your fund equity, planned use of fund equity, but it's about three million dollars and we continue to right-size as we move forward. So pilot drive plus the structural deficit gets you the six-point-four. Now, I'm going to tell you, you, this is budget, you know, actual could be much less. We still have some retirements coming in that we have to pay, um, off, um, over July and August. Anytime teachers fringe benefits, teacher pay, they've already done their service. So that'll be accrued back based on Gatsby thirty-four back to the prior fiscal year. And so that's why you'll see an adjustment when we get to the budget to actual when the auditors come in August. Moving forward, I just wanted to have a moment, uh, about fund equity and a fund equity discussion. Um, this Board of Education has a great fund equity policy which requires us to have at least ten percent. You know, the early warning sign is five percent, the auditors recommend fifteen. But here, as you see, the audit for last year had about twenty-six-point-seven percent. Um, our original budget, uh, had a use, um, of, uh, to get us about eighteen-point-eight. And we've slowly but surely made our way a, a little bit better every time we come back to you with a budget amendment. I'm not going to guarantee it, but, uh, typically we'll have an adjustment again because, um, of supply chain issues on every purchase order that we've let will be filled in the next two days. And, um, we will have probably a savings there. I can't tell you the magnitude of thereof, we're still, uh, digesting that. And then there's, uh, obviously, we're still hiring champions, so there was various vacancies throughout the year as well, where the budget holds the entire amount, but we're still, um, probably going to see a savings there as well. So I always like to present worst-case scenario and then come back to you with, um, a positive outcome. As we move forward with the other funds, I'm just going to make sure, um, you understand that the budget has to be adopted and amended for all funds, not just the general fund. And so this gives you a, a listing of all the other funds in the school district. Um, we are trying to thoughtfully and purposefully spend down some of the smaller funds. So there's, you know, not only less for you to have to worry about, but less for us to worry about as well. So in this, uh, year, we're going to spend down the athletic capital improvement fund. Um, the, um, what we did was build us a small shed or storage facility, um, based on the Field of Dreams, uh, soccer booster club, uh, donated some money and we threw in some money and we were able to get a nice storage facility for their stuff, um, out on, uh, the PSEP campus. Um, the bond programs, as you know, the electorate votes. So we voted a two thousand thirteen bond and had three series, a thirteen, a fifteen, and a nineteen. Those are three series of the same elected or voted on bond. And now we have the twenty-twenty, so we're going to spend down the rest of those old bond proceeds. Um, we're coming back to F and O in August for a prioritization discussion and we'll, uh, identify those for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year to reduce those down. And then we have about seventy-six million dollars left, that, as, uh, Dr. Merritt mentioned earlier tonight, we have programs and projects at Byrd, Smith, and Miller. We also have projects at, um, the Salem Theater and the Plymouth Pool that are all ongoing this summer. So we'll spend down a lot of that resources, uh, here we, uh, coming in this coming summer. Um, and then we have a capital improvement fund that still has, um, about two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars in it. That's from the sale of properties that had, uh, bond dollars in it that needs to be identified for a specific purpose. So that's another capital projects fund. And then Mr. Salser and his group were, um, helpful in spending down the technology device replacement fund. And then the Nichols, uh, trust was for library books. And so we're able to spend those down, um, for this, um, this fiscal year. So that's why you see those going to zero. The debt service fund is at four-point-oh mils. We discussed that at our public hearing, that'll stay for the next year as well. That's the mortgage on the house. So the electorate pays four mils on every tax bill that money goes into a pot and is used to pay all the previous debt, um, issues that we've had as a school district. And then the internal service fund is called, um, a healthcare fund or the, um, money we set aside in this fund in order to pay for our, um, healthcare. And our healthcare is, um, self-funded. And so, um, because of its self-funded, we then set aside dollars from every single fund that has staff in it into this fund. And then this is used to pay the premiums to Blue Garson Blue Shield, our underlying, um, carrier. And then our special revenue funds are those where the Board of Education has adopted for a speci- specific purpose. And so Act eighteen is the center program. That's the countywide special education village that's used to pay for that center program. Those expenses are pre-approved at, by Wayne Risa and then we spend those down over the course of the year. That's for independent paraproses as well as an ASD center program. Um, the community services fund includes a couple of operations, that's preschool, extended day, and, uh, some various summer camps. And so that, um, has a, uh, fund equity at the end of the year. The food service fund, as you know, had a, a huge increase in activity this year because of the federal dollars used for universal feeding during COVID. So we had, um, a large increase. That, that fund typically only has between three and four million dollars of activity and it had more than double. So I know Kristin was here earlier, um, and, uh, on behalf of her staff member or dietitian, but it was a huge, huge, um, labor output to get all that, um, out to our families. And we appreciate all the support that we got throughout the community for that. But that's what you see this year. And their two million dollars will be used to purchase new equipment and, um, other things that they need for the kitchen expansions, beyond what's provided for in the bond. The funded projects funds are all the other funds of the school district that relate to federal purposes. You'll hear, uh, the Plant Moran come, um, in October and talk about the schedule of federal awards. They all have to be accounted for separately. So those are both, uh, federal funds as well as, um, grants and state funding that we have for thirty-one A at-risk title, all our title work, all that goes in there. That entire list is in your board agenda if you want to see all the individual, uh, funding sources we got in that fund. And then finally, under Gatsby eight, um, eighty-four, the school activities funds now have to be recorded in a special revenue fund. And so because of that purpose, um, we have to, uh, re-represent them here, but that's all the other, um, student and, um, adult, uh, activities that we do is now, uh, in the special revenue fund. That's all I want to get through tonight. I will answer any specific questions you might have on anything in your agenda as well as in the PowerPoint as well.
Mr. Brooks?
No, they were all answered last Thursday.
Ms. Chastain?
You're so thorough. I have no questions at this moment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Christensen?
No, I just wanted to, um, ask Ms. Piaz to highlight the, um, the, in the revenue column on slide, uh, the, the slide number five. I know there was that, that asterisk number that you wanted to explain how, that's a very rare occurrence, but explain to the community what that meant.
Thank you for pointing that out. So in, um, in the debt fund and the twenty-twenty debt fund, should be here, right? Yep. Um, I put a footnote on the slide as well as, um, put a footnote in your, um, agenda on the actual fund statements. But, um, very rare occurrence, if you've opened up any of your retirement asset accounts over this last six months, you, you have a little heart skip a beat and so do we as a school district. Um, be, we are required under Governmental Accounting Standards Board statements to require, um, a market-to-market adjustment. That market-to-market adjustment shows an unrealized, uh, loss, as does most of your statements when you open them up, if you in fact open them up or like me, just put them in there for, uh, safekeeping time. Um, but that investment has never, um, come to a, a realized loss. So, uh, our bond funds are invested in a step-lettered portfolio that mirrors our draw schedule for the construction program. So you have a construction program, you then take all your, um, um, how you're going to pay for those bonds and out that program through the life of that issue. And then you marry your draw schedules with governmental securities. Unfortunately, governmental securities have dropped in value, although we're not going to sell those prior to the maturity dates. So in actuality, they won't mature at a loss, they'll mature at an income or a gain. But we have to record it at June thirty as a market-to-market unrealized loss. I've requested both Plant Moran and PFM, Paul Stoddard, our financial advisor, to issue the Board of Education some explanation of that, as well as the community. So you'll see a footnote in your financial statements about that. And you'll also see a letter that I'll get, um, shortly from Paul because it affects every school district that has a current bond issue that's currently in process across the state. Thank you for, um, pointing that out. I forgot to do that on this slide, but it's, um, not going to be realized. So I didn't lose any money, we didn't lose any money, but it, unfortunately, we have to have a market-to-market adjustment at June thirty and this is, uh, required of, of full accrual statements, which we now have to, um, uh, report on at the end of the fiscal year. Clear as mud?
Yeah.
Ms. Du?
Thank you. Great explanation of the budget. Um, I like hearing that there was an extra one-point-two million that was added to our budget, which is getting us over the, um, eighteen percent moving to twenty percent. That is really good. Could you explain just a couple of the things that go into the school activities fund?
Um, okay, so not booster clubs, not PTAs, but everything else but. So those entities are entities all in charge of them, themselves, not part of the school board or the school district. They're all five-on-ones, T-three charitable organizations with their own paperwork and their own filing. So the other activities that would go into that would be, um...
So if you make a profit from pictures, you would put that in your activities fund if you were a building principal to make some decisions for things you'd want to buy for your building?
So if you want to buy a bench for the front entryway, or if you want to get new carpet for, um, a media center or something like that, that's not part of the bond program, but you use those resources, do that work.
Okay.
So like fundraising, but within the school, proper, not, not PTA, not booster club.
Individual building-based.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
No questions, thank you.
So could we go to, um, slide four where you're talking about the fund balance? Um, so, since Mr. Keough isn't here, because he would usually point this out, that we are, we're losing every year. And so even though you were able to whittle it down from the original amount to less, and a lot of that was just a property purchase, we still are spending more than we take in, which is unsustainable at a certain point.
Correct. And so when I talk about a structural deficit, we're still always chasing that number to whittle that to zero.
Yes.
So we're trying to maintain class sizes that got us to a certain level of staffing or we're still legislating, uh, our people in Lansing to try and get us more foundation allowance, um, so that we can meet our, our obligations under our collective bargaining agreement. And so we're still doing that. The good news is, is it's not growing, but if you don't take care of it in year one, it just stays there for year two and sometimes could be legacy costs because retirement goes up, salaries go up and that kind of thing. So we're always chasing that number and trying to get it to zero. That's the goal.
But we really need to have more revenue.
Yes.
And we need to get that from Lansing.
Correct.
And bringing in more kids back to our district.
Right.
Right.
But at the end of the day, we still pay the money to Lansing and then they give it back to us.
Right. Since, oh, since nineteen ninety-four, um, when Proposal A was adopted, it was meant at that time to be a ten-year fix and has never been really looked at.
It was the great equalizer as how it was sold to the public.
So, um, yeah, so i- in a previous, uh, board meeting, I have a graph where I show what the School Research Collaborative talked about. It's over ten thousand dollars and we're only getting eight thousand seven hundred. Now, we're grateful for the eight thousand seven hundred and we're grateful for whatever you're voting on in the next two days for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. But we could always use more because what it takes to actually educate a child in the state of Michigan, per the Research Collaborative, is over ten thousand dollars per year, per child.
That's a general education student.
Yeah.
That's not putting them on the bus.
Right.
And that's not any specialized services. Just the regular, so it's important to understand that what that ten thousand seven hundred dollars is, it's just general education.
That's right.
So, but thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate the time.
All right, next up we have, uh, action item, which is twenty-two oh-six ninety-two, consider approval of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two final budget amendment, first and final reading. That is what we have just gone over. I am looking for a motion.
Uh, Madam President, I move that we, uh, consider approval of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two final budget amendment, first and final reading, action item twenty, well, twenty-two dash oh-six dash ninety-two.
Thank you, I'm looking for a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Christensen, that we, um, consider approval of the final budget amendment. Um, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes? Any opposed, say no? All right. And the next thing we have is action item twenty-two oh-six ninety-three, consider approval to adopt the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget for general operating funds and other funds, final reading. I am looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval to adopt the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget for general operations funds and other funds, final reading, action item twenty-two oh-six ninety-three.
Okay, looking for a second?
Second.
It was moved by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Wilson. Um, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? All right. Uh, next we have, consider resolution to award radio station automation contract. This is a first reading.
Good evening, and this resolution, um, it results from the PSEP's radio station, eighty-eight-point-one, The Park, has identified needs to update their automated system. Uh, the station currently uses an ENCO system and a portion of that current system was upgraded five years ago with the remainder of the automation being, uh, much older than that. Um, Bill Keith is here, uh, this evening if you have any specific questions. But we did see, uh, proposals under an RFP to purchase the radio automated server play-out system, including all the ancillary equipment, software, training, and commissioning. Um, that was publicly, uh, opened on June first and discussed at the Finance and Operations meeting held June twenty-third.
All right, does anybody have any questions about this?
No.
I love the radio station.
This is really... I just want to add, you talked a lot about this during the Finance and Operations Committee meeting, like Ms. Piaz mentioned. And it's, it's just an, an exciting thing to, to be able to, um, support our radio station and our students who are so interested in the program. And what this will allow, and I, and forgive me if I'm misspeaking here, but what this, uh, new software will allow our students to do is make it feel like, you know, they're alive, uh, they're allowed to pre-record a lot of their, um, segments, but it has a feeling of, of, you know, a student maybe being in the booth at ten PM or six-thirty in the morning. Um, it just allows for some really practical use of, of equipment that they would use if they, uh, choose to pursue this as a career or passion of theirs too. So it was, it was a great conversation.
Not to put you on the spot, Mr. Keith, but you want to share a little bit since we're in first read?
Sure. Well, first I just want to thank the board, thank the administration for support.
Well, first, I just want to thank the board, thank the administration for supporting the radio station, and supporting this opportunity to upgrade the equipment, and really, it's a testament to the tremendous community support for the radio station through all of our fundraisers that were able to do this. We, we've been using ENCO systems for close to 20 years, and we have had a great relationship with them, but because of this whole process of, because of the expense involved with the process, we needed to seek additional proposals, or possibilities for proposals. So we put out information on what we were looking for to the leading broadcast automation suppliers. Two of them provided proposals, including ENCO. ENCO was the best price, by about $4,000, and we've had this long-term relationship with them, a lot of success working with them. And I think one of the other things that's really strong in their favor is they're local, right here in the Novi area. So we've had a couple times where, because of working with computers, system melts down, and you're scrambling trying to get back on the air, and they have been able to come over and help us get it back on the air and really keep the radio station running. And I think it will have some tremendous opportunities for our students, because they'll be working with some of the equipment that is used by state-of-the-art broadcasters around the world, so we're really excited about it.
Thank you.
That's exciting.
Thanks for the support, too, we really do appreciate it.
Thank you for all that you do.
Yeah, this really is a good program for the kids, to, like, there aren't too many high schools that have a radio station that students can work at, and there's also a class, a credit class given.
So I only have one wondering, is, because it's in first read, are they, are you all asking for the best we can give our kids? Like, like, is it everything that you need right now, our kids, what they need to be competitive, to have the best experience possible? Like, ask for what you will?
Well, I would say so.
Okay.
We're really happy with it, I mean, it could always be bigger if we had more space and we had more studios. And the exciting thing about it is it's really through, we're able to provide the funds for it through the fundraising that the station has been able to do, so it is a real testament to the community's support, the way the local businesses have supported the radio station, our listeners, and also the alumni. Our alumni are really a big part of helping to fund the radio station and to do tremendous fundraising.
That's awesome, thank you.
I've got a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I was wondering if there's any way that we can get more power out there, so we can...
That would be great.
Or is there, is there a limit for a school system?
There's no limit, other than what other stations are in the area, and what stations are close to you on the FM dial. So we have pretty close to max out, at, I think we're at 300 watts right now, and that's pretty close to max out. There might be a little bit of room, but there's a number of different broadcasters in the area, right around 88.1, that, that kind of keep us. But the nice thing is, is that you can listen anywhere in the world through the wonders of the internet, and through our mobile app, so.
Press that button, listen live.
Yes.
All right, and so next up, we have Consider Resolution for Awards for Bid Package EL2 Electronic Building Sign Purchase, First Reading.
Thank you. Mr. Grzinski is here, if you have questions, but I do want to have a correction. It's the purchase of the three electronic signs for Byrd, Miller, and Smith, not the installation. So the installation will be bid later. There is a significant lead time in this purchase, and that's why we're getting it in front of you today, so that we can get the signs, at least on somebody's docket, to get them built and maintained, and then as soon as we get a definite delivery date, we'll bring back the installation piece of it as well. And this was also discussed at the Finance and Operations Committee, held on June 23, for a gross cost of $70,979. Mr. Grzinski?
This follows the standard that we established for the EL1 signs. There's about a 6.5% increase from the signs that we ordered for EL1, to the signs for EL2, but we won't, we won't get them till winter, so that's why we're looking to get them, get them ordered as soon as we can.
Does anybody have any questions, comments? I think it's great that you're going to standardize the signs, and also that schools don't have to fundraise for them.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, so then, next up is Consider Resolution for Awards for a District-Wide Trash and Recycling Contract, First Reading.
Thank you. Mr. Grzinski is still with us, to discuss the Waste Disposal and Cardboard Recycling Contract, which currently expires on July 31, 2022. We developed an RFP for these services. Three proposals were opened on June 8 by district representatives, and this recommendation is for Republic Services, Inc., in the amount of $110,350.90, to be a three-year agreement with the option for two additional one-year periods. Also discussed at the Finance and Operations Committee Meeting, held on June 23. Mr. Grzinski?
And we have Tracy Juliette here from Republic to answer any questions, but we're pleased with the results. We had a pretty tight bid result. We're showing a steady increase over the years, but not a dramatic increase, so we're pleased that we're not blowing the roof on costs. It's pretty straightforward, we're picking up the trash, and we're recycling the cardboard. Any questions?
Any questions? You go ahead.
In the past, at the board meetings, we had talked about, and students have brought it up, in terms of increasing the types of materials that can be recycled. Have you looked into that, and what the cost, the pros and cons would be, so recycling other things besides cardboard?
So it's, it's cost and sorting. It's making sure that what your waste streams don't get crossed, because then you lose your, they throw it in the garbage. They can't recycle, so, so that's the main, you know, the manpower to sort, retrieve the recycling, and get it to the appropriate pickup spot, so it's an expense.
It's a cost, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Anybody else have anything? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, and next up is an Action Item 220694, Consider Approval of Resolution for Bid Package EL2 PA System Technology, Final Reading. Looking for a motion?
Madam President, I move that we approve of Resolution for Bid Package, is that the Systems Technology, Bid Package EL2 PA Systems Technology, Final Reading, Action Item 220694.
Thank you, I'm looking for a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Member Brooks, and seconded by Member Christensen. Does anybody have any questions? We did go over this previously. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? All right. And then next up is Action Item 220695, Consider Approval of Resolution for Discovery Middle School Emergency Chiller Replacement, First and Final Reading.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of the Resolution for Discovery Middle School Emergency Chiller Replacement, First and Final Reading, Action Item 220695.
All right, I'm looking for a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Member Brooks, and seconded by Mr. Wilson.
And Mr. Grzinski is still with us, to talk about the failure of the Discovery Middle School chillers on May 27, and the various discussion of the other chiller was also previously not working up to standard. So then, we're requesting the replacement of both Discovery chillers at this time, using a purchasing consortium called Sourcewell, formerly known as NJPA, vendor contract 070121-CAR. Carrier Inc. was, is recommended for award, for a total cost of $426,500, and based on the excessive leadway times, 30 to 35 weeks currently, it was determined that we bring this forward as a first and final reading. We also discussed it at the last FNO meeting last week, on June 23, and we are currently using a rental unit for the duration of time necessary to cool the building until such time as it can be installed and received. Mr. Grzinski?
Additionally, there's a 12% increase that registers on the 8th of July, which is about 40 grand, so that's another reason we're bringing it for a first and final. The, just a note, the chillers were original to the building, 23 years old, essentially past its useful life.
Wow.
Wow.
Served us well.
Discovery's 23 years old?
[laughing].
Yeah.
Kills me, still.
Crazy.
That is crazy. All right, does anybody have any questions?
I do have a question about the warranty on this, that comes with the installation and the equipment.
Yeah, so the unit itself, I believe, is warranted for five years, parts and labor too, but I can confirm that, and make sure that I get that information to you.
Is that about average for this?
It's about average, with the big companies, like, we brought in the JCI carrier train, because it's a big piece of equipment, we need a lot of, you know, product structuring capability here, to push it through the system, so when you deal with the bigger companies like that, you're generally pretty safe from a warranty aspect.
Okay. In the, in the document you have attached to the resolution, on first, first proposal, Carrier, near the bottom, services, it's a one-year labor, five-year parts.
Ah, there it is.
Okay.
Thank you for clarification.
Anything else? All right, I will call for the vote, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? All right, thank you. And now we are up to three, Teaching and Learning with Ms. Rail.
Yep, so tonight, we're here to present to you the 2000, or 2021-2022 98B Goals and Benchmark Assessment Report, and our Comprehensive Needs Analysis. And so what we're going to do is, you'll hear from Anthony Ruela, Executive Director of Data, Middle Schools Data and School Improvement, he'll share the overview of the data at a high level. Then Kimberly May, our Director of State and Federal Programs, will share with you the new MYKIP process, we talked about it last year, and talked about the MYKIP template, but we're going to uncover a little bit more for you, what work takes place with MYKIP, and then I'm going to share with you, as we look at the data, what are we doing about it specifically, especially for our students who have the greatest areas of needs. So we'll talk in specificity about what the new roles are that are rolling out, and what we're doing to address all of the, you know, pervasive demographic gaps that we have. So I'll hand it over to Mr. Ruela, who will take us through the data.
Thank you, Ms. Rail. Good evening, everyone, I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of the board this evening, and the community, with my colleagues, to present the spring update on the district benchmark assessment progress, as well as share some key findings from data that we're using to populate the district comprehensive needs assessment. In addition, we will provide an overview of the continuous improvement process, as well as the specific actions that we are implementing next year to meet the needs of our students, as reflected by the data. Our data protocols that we use in teaching and learning are anchored in the PCCS strategic goals. The data that we will be reviewing are aligned to the bolded sections of the dynamic plan that you see on this slide, and with the MYKIP focus on the whole child, that you will hear about later in the presentation from Kimberly May, Director of State and Federal I know in previous board meetings, we've discussed the benchmark legislation multiple times, but I share this slide, just as a reminder to you and our community, of the requirements of the law. I'm not going to read all of it through, but it's there, just for, for the presentation purpose. Similarly, the next series of slides serves as a reminder of the middle and end-of-year goals that were developed at the beginning of this school year. With respect to students in grades K through 2, you will note that the NWEA serves as the single assessment, as we're reviewing both student achievement and growth, and the NWA is given in grades K2 three times a year. For students in grades 3, 5, because we administer the NWEA just in the fall and the winter, we are measuring student achievement in the spring by looking at the BAS, which is the Fanta-Senpenel Benchmark Assessment System, as well as the achievement of academic standards by students in math. For middle school students, we are measuring student achievement and growth in the winter using the NWEA, and achievement in the spring by reviewing course grades in math and language arts. And because we do not administer the NWEA to our high school students, we measure student achievement at the end of each semester by reviewing class grades. Continuing in the spirit of review, our initial benchmark review at the midterm, or the midyear, indicated that academic growth during the pandemic years was less than the academic growth for students pre-pandemic. In addition, it showed that specific demographic groups were even more greatly impacted than others. Again, as I stated in the mid-year report, these findings mirror those presented in Epix' report on Michigan State Assessments. And that was one that was released in December of 2021. So let's look at the key findings from our spring NWEA data. And to do this, we're going to begin with our youngest learners. One of the findings from our previous data review was that our K2 students' growth in both reading and math was trending below average. What we see this spring is that all demographic groups demonstrated above-average growth in both reading and math, with fall-to-spring growth being slightly better in math than in reading. However, we do find that the achievement and growth gaps that we discussed in, at the midterm, have remained constant from fall to spring, or really, from winter to spring, I should say. As we move into the upper elementary, grades 3 through 5, we see a similar pattern, where there are improvements in student growth, both when we look at fall-to-winter growth, as well as winter-to-winter growth. And as a reminder, winter-to-winter growth talks about the winter performance in the previous year, compared to the winter performance from this year. Again, what has not changed are the gaps in achievement and growth that we described in our last review. The observations lifted from the upper elementary continue into middle school. Again, we're seeing improvements in student growth, both when we look at fall-to-winter growth, as well as winter-to-winter growth. But again, as we mentioned in the previous two levels, the gaps in achievement and growth continue to persist. In addition to the NWEA, there are academic data points that have just become available as the school year has ended. We're in the process of analyzing that data, and we'll submit it to the board in board notes when we update the public-facing 98B Goals Reporting Document that's on the district So in addition to the academic data being examined in the 98Bs Goals Reporting that I just referenced, there are multiple other data points that we look at in determining the needs of students. The comprehensive review of data, whether it was in the old school improvement framework, or the current MYKIP framework that Ms. May is going to speak about in a moment, that comprehensive review of data is also known as the CNA, or the Comprehensive Needs Assessment. I'll be sharing some key findings from this comprehensive data review in the areas of demographics, attendance, behavior, and social-emotional learning competencies and supports. While the benchmark data covered earlier is part of the CNA, given the time of year, that academic data that I referenced before, as well as the MSAP, PSAT, graduation, and credit attainment data, will be added to the CNA as those data sets become finalized and are reviewed by teaching and learning. Beginning with student demographics, we see that while we have seen an overall decrease in the number of our students, since 2018, we have seen increases in multiple demographic groups, those that are listed here on the screen. For example, students identified as economically disadvantaged have increased by 13%. Similarly, we see relative increases in five racial and ethnic groups. As we look at our student attendance rate, we use for comparisons purposes, the attendance rate in 2018-19, which was our last full pre-pandemic year. So as we look at this attendance rate, we do see that student attendance this school year is slightly lower than it was in the last pre-pandemic year of 2018-19. The next step that we'll engage in is examining the, the data to see the multiple... The next step that we'll engage in is examining the, the data to see the multiple, the relative impact of the multiple factors that we know influenced attendance this year, whether that be illness, COVID quarantine, disruptions in transportations, or even needs of families, right? We know that there are multiple things that impacted student attendance and we really need the time to dig into those because it's so multi-factor. We've heard from our families, students and staff, that the pandemic has impacted students' behavior. For the context of this analysis, again, we compared our two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two data with the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen data as our last full academic year. In doing so, we see that our K-12 suspension numbers remain stable despite having fewer total students. In addition to observing an overall increase in general inappropriate behaviors that disrupt class or offend peers, we also saw specific increases in verbal threats and aggressive behavior towards staff. Finally, we continue to see that our Black and African-American students disproportionately account for a higher rate of suspensions than we should expect based upon the size of that student group relative to the overall population. The final area that we're going to cover is related to the social-emotional competencies and student social-emotional competencies and the supports that our schools provide to help students grow these skills. To measure these competencies, we administered Panorama surveys at multiple times during the school year. Currently, we're assessing students in six competency areas that align with the Michigan Department of Education's social and emotional, social and emotional competencies framework, as well as with our K-12 SEL lessons. These areas address the competencies that students need to regulate their own behavior, support their positive decision-making, help them with their ability to navigate relationships with others, as well as help them develop their beliefs about how their own hard work and perseverance leads to their growth and success in school. All of these that I've stated have been shown to positively impact students' performance in school. The survey topics that you see on the screen, supportive relationships, self-management, social awareness, grit, growth mindset, and emotional regulation, emotion regulation, were selected as survey topics by our mental health providers, our counselors, our school social workers, psychologists, and special education teacher consultants. They received training in the beginning of the year and provided feedback on what they believed were the six most important social-emotional competencies that we should measure with our, measure for our students because they impact student success in the classroom, whether it's academically or socially, as well as are, were aligned with the SEL lessons that they've been developing. So looking at our elementary findings, for students in grades K two, their teachers completed perception surveys that measured these competencies for students. We didn't have our youngest learners complete their own surveys. So these are teacher-completed surveys. And the teachers report that students had strengths in emotion regulation and engagement, but weakness in self-management, relative weakness in self-management and grit, which kind of really isn't surprising for five-through-seven-year-olds, right? Not the, not the best when it comes to self-management, but they're learning it. And, and that's great. And, and the teachers reported that they saw great areas of increase when it came to grit for students and learning strategies. So showing that as students progressed through the school year, that they believed more in themselves, they were more willing to stick through and persevere in a task, as well as were applying the strategies, the learning strategies that the teachers were teaching them in the classroom, applying that to, to the work that they were doing. Students in grades three through five filled out their own self-report surveys and they indicated self-management and supportive relationships were relative strengths for them. And they highlighted that growth mindset and emotion regulation were relative weaknesses for this group. When we compared responses from the mid-year to the end-of-year surveys, we saw that students showed growth in both grit and emotion regulation. Examining our secondary data, we see that our middle and high school students' end-of-year profiles are exactly the same. An interesting finding, when we look at all of the self-report data for students grades three through twelve, it's interesting to note that self-management and supportive relationships are the two areas that all student groups reported as the relative strengths. Similarly, it's also interesting to note that the two biggest growth areas for each level were grit and emotion regulation. So this finding leads us to wonder, really, and, and suggest of the impact of the self, the social-emotional less, learning lessons that our, our teachers were, were doing with our students. Because really, you know, in order to show those grit and emotion regulation increases, that suggests that students are developing the skills to manage their emotions, utilizing concrete strategies that are being taught for them within the classroom. Similarly, it may be that students are developing that grit not only by the encouragement of their teachers, but also learning that, hey, by implementing these strategies, I'm actually seeing the success of those strategies. Therefore, I'm more likely to persevere and, and really stick to something when it gets tough, whether it's academic or interpersonal. And all of those things translate to success in the classroom over time. In addition to assessing students' competencies, we also want to hear from the students with respect to how well we, as buildings, administrations, and teachers are supporting their growth. To that end, we surveyed students in three areas, teacher-student relationships, sense of belonging, and diversity inclusion. And just as a note, the diversity and inclusion surveys are only written by Panorama for students in grades six through twelve. But these three areas were chosen because they complement the K-12, the questions that are on the K-12 Insight Survey. So it's a nice compliment in order to get a good, whole, well-rounded picture of what our students are telling us they're experiencing and how well we're supporting them with that experience. In looking at the data, we find that students in grades three through five report strong teacher-student relationships and a greater sense of belonging than students at the middle and high school level. And as, as a secondary educator, that tells me that we really need to place an even greater emphasis on building relationships with all students. Not only do we need to be intentional about knowing our students, about creating multiple opportunities for all students to feel seen and be heard, but also we really need to ensure that all students have an opportunity to see themselves as contributing to the school as a whole. We want them to be an active participant and engaged and know and believe that they make a difference. With respect to secondary students' reports of diversity and inclusion, our response, our, one of the interesting findings was that our students responded more favorably than about ninety percent of all students across the, the nation in that area. And again, with diversity and inclusion, that's asking students how diverse, integrated, and fair they believe their school is for students from different races, ethnicities, and cultures. Now I invite Kimberly May to come to the mic and share an overview of our continuous improvement process.
Good evening. I am going to drop the mask just so I'm a little clear. So, good evening, everyone. We began the Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process, also known as MyKIP, during the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year. During that year, we leaned heavily on our previous work around multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS, reviewing K-12 academic and behavior data and acknowledging that we needed additional tools to collect social-emotional data as well as academic data. We completed the MDE template identifying our district goal in May twenty-twenty-one. Our goal will remain the same through twenty-twenty-three. During the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year, we established our district MyKIP team, which consists of various stakeholders, including teachers, parents, district and building-level administrators. The diversity of the team is important to acknowledge because while the MyKIP process is about continuous improvement, one of the main elements is the whole child. Therefore, it is imperative that all stakeholders be represented as part of the continuous improvement process. Also, understanding that schools are systems and each system must be in alignment in order to have a significant impact on all areas of learning academics, of learning, academics, behavior, and social-emotional being. So the screen here just simply shows the process and just letting you know that it's continuous improvement, whole, whole child, and systems thinking. On our next slide, we have our MyKIP goal. The MyKIP process is activated by five components. Assessing needs, plan, implement, monitor, adjust, and evaluate. Completing a comprehensive needs assessment is the first component, as Mr. Ruela has shared. Developing goals based upon our needs, based upon our needs is part of the plan component. The goal or goals are used to begin identifying strategies and activities that are focused on the whole child and equity. The goal before you was created in two thousand and twenty-one and will remain through two thousand and twenty-three. Our strategies and activities are monitored and adjusted using the comprehensive, comprehensive needs assessment. So we won't use the CNA to change our goal, but we'll use the CNA to say, hey, are these strategies and activities that we've come up with, are they working? Do we need to tweak them? Do we need to do away with them? That's what that, one of the reasons why we use the CNA. On the next slide are our dynamic plan strategic goals. And so the dynamic plan and MyKIP goals are aligned and anchor our data, data protocol process as lifted by Ms. Ruela earlier. The highlighted information are the intended outcomes of the MTSS process. What is most important are the activities to meet our goals. This work takes place through our tiered supports. And at this point, I will invite our Chief Academic Officer, Beth Rail, to share how we monitored and made adjustments for the upcoming academic school.
So as you've heard and as we've talked about multiple times, we have pervasive gaps. And when we look at those pervasive gaps, we need to look at and monitor and adjust based on our data. One of the things, and I'm going to walk through several things that we've put in place for the upcoming school year to address specifically the demographic gaps and our students of greatest need. So we've talked briefly about some of these. We talked about all of them at SPA in much more depth, but I'm going to share a little bit more and uncover a little bit more about what the roles will be doing in the upcoming year. So we have a program that we are launching next year called the Teacher on Special Assignment, also known as a TOSA role for student academic support. At the elementary level, well, we'll start at the high school and work backwards. At the high school level, the TOSA for Student Academic Support is a student success coach, a series of student success coaches. They will engage in a case management-type activity and case management structure and support for eleven-T eligible students. And eleven-T eligibility means seven demographic groups. We talked about them briefly last time, but we're looking at students of economic disadvantage. And as you saw in the demographic slide, we've had a significant increase over the past few years in students with economic disadvantage, also known as free and reduced launched eligible. We're now sitting at about twenty-two percent district-wide of, of students who have some form of economic disadvantage. Students of color, students who are identified as English learners, students who are eligible for mycannyvento services, students with IEPs, students in foster care, and migrant students. Those are seven eligible eleven-T groups. So when you hear me talk about eleven-T, it's the funding number. So what the feds call eleven-T is just all that fund numbers and, and language around how it's funded. But think about those seven demographic groups. And then within those seven demographic groups, the students who are struggling to meet academic, behavioral, or social-emotional goals. Just because I'm a student of economic disadvantage does not mean I'm struggling, but it may mean that I'm struggling. And so as we look at those lenses. So the high school student success coaches will be progress monitoring and meeting weekly with students. So they'll have basically a caseload of students that they'll work with. They help students navigate any obstacles. They act as a mentor, a support, a support position, an advocate, and kind of a connector for students. They work on individualized goal plans with students, provide academic tips and academic support, and then work with families, staff, and students to ensure that there are no barriers to learning for the student. At the middle school level, we're looking at academic support teachers in ELA and mathematics. This will be push-in co-teaching model in classrooms that work with small groups as well as support and co-teach side-by-side to do intensive instructional strategies that are targeted for our, our eligible groups. At the elementary level, we're looking at TOSAs for student academic support. And these are teachers on special assignment in third and fourth grades. And what they will be doing is working in classrooms with small groups of eligible students. So sitting down during the literacy blocks and really digging into the small group work there. Also, you'll see on here, and we talked about this a lot at the last meeting, but just to, to kind of review it again, a significant revision of our K-five elementary literacy intervention program. Based on the data that we've reviewed over not just the past year, but over the past several years, over the last ten years of NWA data, we've recognized that the program that has been in place for years is not working for our students. What we do know is working for our students, though, is that we did a pilot program in Field and Erickson Elementary this year on intensive instructional coaching in classrooms to provide tier-one support to increase instructional statuses. Remember, tier-one is in-classroom, all students, side-by-side, helping support teachers, helping do instructional coaching, helping support students in those classrooms as well. So we have a lot of data around that model and we know that that model is working. So as we look at the revision of the comprehensive K-five academic intervention program, you're going to see some shift on some of it into tier-one instructional support with an addition of tier-two. We're also looking at through budget transformation this year. The, the thing that was lifted as the highest area of support from the district leadership and district folks was full-day kindergarten learning support paraprofessionals. This is a full-day kindergarten person in each kindergarten classroom that will be highly trained by our district instructional literacy coach. So we have an early literacy coach that is funded out of thirty-five A funds and she will be training all of these instructional paraprofessionals on high-intensive, intensity, high-dosage literacy strategies. And they will be working with our students with her support across all of the kindergarten classrooms. Also, as we look at what else is in here, elementary building-based instructional coaches. That's where I talked about that, research that's showing instructional coaches work. This is a shift, not new funding, this is not moving funding over here, but this, this piece and the other piece, which are the interventionists, title-one interventionists and non-title-one interventionists, that is the shifting of our current funding for our elementary intervention program. We did not dismantle that and replace it with student success coaches or anything like that. This is a shift in how the programming is working. These are pushing into first-through-third-grade classrooms and doing intensive supports. What we know based on our data is our gaps start early and they persist. So we need to layer on a lot of intentional supports in our earliest classrooms. That's why we started with the elementary literacy program, intervention program this year first. As we look forward, we're also looking at the intervention programs from middle school and high school and how we provide, look at the data to determine, are those meeting our needs well? Our biggest, our biggest literacy intervention program, our biggest intervention program was at the elementary level. That's why we started there first. Elementary special education teacher consultants. What a teacher consultant does is builds the skill sets of the other teachers. In this case, it's for addressing the needs of students with IEPs. They do innovative programming and supports and innovative professional learning and then also go into classrooms and help support. Their primary role, however, is to support teachers in understanding and building new instructional strategies to support targeted students, and in this case, the students are students with IEPs. Facilitated instructional rounds and learning walks. Instructional rounds are where our, our instructional leaders go into buildings and walk in classrooms in small groups and talk about and uncover what's happening there. Learning walks are where we take teachers along with us and we uncover practice and we help provide support for instructional strategies so that people can see the great work that is happening and also areas of growth that we can provide and work on collaboratively. These are all done with a focus on culturally responsive practices. We implemented this past year a culturally responsive practices, classroom practices walkthrough form with look-for's so that we can uncover very transparently what should we see in a classroom and how does that link to the teacher evaluation system. So we talked about that. Dr. Lilly talked about that briefly a couple of times over the past. So, we talked about that. Dr. Lilly talked about that briefly a couple of times over the past year. That will be fully implemented this year, and we'll be able to get back to these instructional rounds and learning walks that we were starting to do pre-pandemic, and then we had a little hiccup and disruption when we were all over the place, in and out of school and those types of things. Additionally, diversity, equity, and inclusion climate and culture specialists. These will be working with the, with Dr. Lilly in the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Department. And what we're looking at, or in, in her role as the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And these folks will be working on supporting improvement of culture and climate in our buildings. Establishing safe and safe spaces for learning, promoting emotional and social growth, and really looking at a, a school-wide, district-wide program for what we talked about earlier when we did the Teaching and Learning Dynamic Plan kind of strategic objectives, which is that culturally responsive framework across the district. Additionally, providing school-wide tier-one supports and implementation, professional learning, and coaching for climate and culture across our district, specifically with a, with a real specific lens in our high school. Year one of a two-year American School Counselor Association National Model of Professional Learning. One of the things we know is we can strengthen our counseling program and align it better with national standards and national, national professional learning. So, we're putting all of our counselors through a two-year intensive program for counseling support. It's a nationally-recognized model, and they've committed to doing this work with us. So, we'll be putting a lot of professional learning into them to better support our students and ensure that we're not putting any unintended barriers to learning or barriers to access to programming for our students. And then, finally, you saw some of them here tonight being hired, even though that actually was implemented in this past year's budget, the Elementary Student Success Coaches and the Middle School Deans of Student Support. We'll have full implementation of that program, which will also help to provide support for targeted students. These deans, and these deans aren't like what you often think of as a dean. This is not a behavioral or a disciplinary position. This is a support position. Similar to what I talked to about the High School Student Success Coaches, these folks that are in these roles will be providing targeted, individualized support for young people at the elementary and middle school level to ensure that all barriers are removed so that they can have full access to all, all aspects of our curriculum. And with that, we'll pause and take any questions that you might have at this time. And I'll invite members of the team back up as necessary to kind of have some conversation, so.
Mr. Brooks?
I was just kind of wondering what, what you use. Do you use it like test scores as a way of finding out the deficiencies of what they? So, you can target the question and see if they can understand what the answer is?
There's multiple levels of data, and also, I know that Mr., we didn't, we didn't make this connection, so I want to make this connection right now. The board was given the full comprehensive needs assessment, included all of the data, and it's like 80 pages of data? Or around there, 60, 80 pages of data? That also will be available to the public and linked on our website. So, multiple test scores, so BAS, the Benchmark Assessment System, NWEA data at the, at the elementary level, standards at the elementary level. At the middle school level, we're looking at grades and also, you know, different levels of achievement. High school primarily grades, but also, as we look at the self-reporting data for Panorama and those types of things, that gives us a lens into our student social emotional needs. Social, emotional, and foundational relationship skills are key to learning. So, building a solid foundation, feeling like I belong to a place, feeling like I'm seen, heard, and represented in a school is a very key element for the foundation of me being able to learn well in a classroom, me being able to learn well in a school. So, those are all pieces that, as we look at the data, then we determine what are our actions to help support those areas. Another thing we could talk about, too, is the ESA block at the, the ESA period at the high school. This year was the first year rollout of the Extension Support Advisory Period, where with the goal of each student having a champion in that building, in, in that piece up, where they meet with them once a week for SEL and oversight and just support in that way. And then, they have time, the second time during the week where they are, they can go and get additional academic support in the school day from, from other teachers. So, as we look at all of the data, we look at all of those types of programming. This year was the pilot year for that. There's work being done by a committee over the summer to strengthen that program and make it even better for next year, to make sure we tighten up some things that need to be tightened up and provide even more, even more powerful support for students as we look forward, so. But yes, it's, it's a variety of data sets, much of which is benchmark assessment, things like that. It gives us a pulse over time.
Thanks.
Ms. Jazde?
I just got a couple of questions. And this is really from my own learning at the moment. So, like on slides 10, 11, 12, I'm curious as to the timeframe. So, for example, when we say all groups demonstrated average or above average, like growth in reading or math. And then, on the same slide, one of the dot points of bullets would say that achievement and growth gaps remain consistent. So, those two things don't seem to align, sorry, at the same time period?
Nope. And I can see where someone might say that that doesn't align. So, think about it's a, if it's a fall-to-spring growth, right? And the gap is 10 points. Let's just make up arbitrarily 10 points. And then, one group grows from fall to spring, 10 points, and the other group grows from fall to spring, 10 points. They grow the same amount, and it may be above average, but that gap stays the same. What we need to be looking at doing more consistently and with intentionality is looking at those students who are not performing where we believe that they should and where we know they can. And we need to grow them at a faster rate than we're growing other groups. Well, then, then we would grow the aggregate average of all the students.
That makes sense. And I think that unless, particularly if somebody's going to watch this later and list their looking at the data and see that visual, that might not make sense, so.
That was a great question. Thank you.
Question is, I had a bunch, but it's also almost nine o'clock. Yeah, I know. I try to preserve my questions. For the, where is it? I'm really excited about the resources that we are putting in place, right? You know, sometimes I feel a way that it took us 10 years, or sometimes I think that we throw spaghetti at a wall. This is Lironda's language. I know that's not what we're doing. I know that you, that's not what we're doing. So, I'm really excited to see what's happening. What I'm curious about is how we're going to measure that? It's a lot of resources, a lot of things going on, making sure that our teachers are supported, our building administrators are supported, and that our students are supported. But how is that tracked and measured in a meaningful way so that we don't look up 10 years later and say, that didn't work?
Correct. Yep. And so, it, we, it will not be 10 years later, trust me on this. If it is, you want me to say what I say to you? No, the, how we measure it is a couple of things. One is how many students were served? What's the duration and amount of time that they were served? What is the impact of that? So, we can look at a multiple measures for that. We look at assessment. We look at data and test scores. We look at attendance data. So, if a student has an issue getting to school, what are the barriers to doing that? And then, do we see a change in attendance when we've put some supports in place? So, there's multiple measures. We do that with that, and that data is what informs, is this working or not? Similar to what we talked about last week when we talked about the Elementary Intervention Program. So, $3.2 million, 679 students served, $4,800 per student, and we saw the outcome of that. That didn't work for our students. Has nothing to do with the great people that were doing those roles. The system wasn't working for our students. So, every year, we will be talking about these. Next, you know, mid-year, we do mid-year points. We do with our intervention programs, looking at four- and six-week points. Are they working? Is this program working? Mid-year and end of year, we've talked, and you've, you've talked about having us come and do a couple of times a year data. Absolutely. We will talk about, what are we seeing? Are we seeing return on investment, that term that is used often in business, but we don't often use in education? What's our return on investment? We're putting a lot of investment here. Are we seeing bang for our buck? Are we seeing increase in student achievement? Are we seeing better outcomes for our students? Are our students indicating that they are feeling safe, represented at school? Are they feeling like they're supported? Are we doing the things that make a difference? Because we're not going to stand up here year after year and say, I'm sorry, we don't know what to do. That's not who we are, and that's not what we're going to do.
Thank you so much. I yield to my other trustees. There's lots of questions.
Ms. Christian, sir?
Yeah, I thank my fellow board members for the thoughtful, thoughtful questions because it leads into something that I was wondering about. So, if we're looking at slides 26 and 27, going over the strategic goals for next school year, you know, I, I think along the same lines of throwing the spaghetti at the wall, but obviously not, we know we're all working very hard here. I appreciate sort of that thoughtful moving forward, how, how are we going to correct this problem? My wondering is, you know, are these positions already posted? What's the rollout for this change? And, you know, what does that look like for the road ahead, especially kind of adding to this, too? We know that hiring has been so difficult, so I, I think this, these seem like really powerful programs to put in place. You know, do we feel that we're going to be able to fill those positions if they're not already?
I see Dr. Vartini Gibbs wants to talk about the hiring, and then I'm going to talk about the training.
Okay.
Thank you. So, for the Teacher on Special Assignment positions, all positions have been filled except one at the high school level. And we will get that filled. It's an internal, it's for internal teachers only. The Building-Based Instructional Coaches, we have 75% of those filled already. The Special Education Teacher Consultants, we have one of the two. And the Building-Based Instruction, already said that one, I apologize. So, we are, I would say, if I was just going to put a percentage, we are 85% there.
Okay. And we're spending time this summer, all candidates and all of the folks moving into these positions, were told in advance that they are going to do some intensive training this summer with us. Additionally, what we saw is, we saw several of our high-performing educators who are veterans in our district come out to serve in these positions for a couple, a couple of years so that we can get a really solid handle on what's working. And then, the next question that someone may ask, so I'm going to, I'm going to kind of jump out in front of this question, is at that time, because some of this is using federal funding, at that time, we'll be looking at, if these programs are so valuable and moving the needle like we think they will, then what do we need to leverage to be able to support them moving forward? And that's where we start to look across all of our funding sources, the general fund, the state and federal programs fund, any other grant funding that we have. Because we know that the federal 11T dollars and the Section 23B dollars are not going to be here forever. So, we need to get a good, solid look at what is working well for our students, and then how do we support that moving forward?
Thank you. Ms. Sedu?
Thank you. I have some numbers, questions. In the copy, the 2021, 2022 Benchmark Assessment 98B summary report. That was one of the links that was embedded.
Yeah, in the CNA link. Yep.
I think it's page five. And you may have mentioned it as well, that when you look at K-2, NWEA reading scores, that there is a decline in almost every subgroup for K-2. And I'm wondering some of your thoughts on that?
Right, and that's, that's related specifically, sorry, I forget about the. So, that's related specifically to, on page five, is students meeting or exceeding their growth projections. So, that's something that our instructional team would really need to look at in terms of where between the middle, like, so the first part is fall to mid-year growth, right? So, that's looking at one, one piece versus fall to, to spring growth, right? So, thinking about what did that second half of the year look like in the classroom, challenges, curriculum? So, that would be something that, you know, I, I don't, I can't answer at this point. Like, that would be something the curriculum team, right, that's, they're looking at, that's their work.
Yep. Additionally, remember that these are, these projected growth, these projected growth percentiles from NWEA are based on a non-pandemic, any kind of sample size. So, there is, there is pandemic effect, you know, that, that is probably, now, I can't say that until we dig all into the data and we look at all of the, the, you know, disaggregated pieces down deep in and talk with our teachers and things like that. But we know the pandemic affected our students.
Right.
We know that they affected them academically. We know it massively affected them socially, emotionally, and behaviorally, you know? And so, this year was a lot about stability and stamina, getting everybody back in school in a stable manner and building, rebuilding the stamina. Anecdotal data from our teachers, I've, I've been sitting with a number of teachers, and they've talked about how academic stamina was a really significant challenge this year. Not even at the beginning of the year, a lot at the beginning of the year, but it's, it's taken time throughout the year to, to get back into the groove of school, right? And so, you know, that plays out in this kind of data, and what we look at over time is, are we now kind of moving forward from here? So, but great question.
Happy to see that math has improved. So, I do have a wondering, I heard Fontis and Pinnell, and I am not an ELA major. I taught math, so. But you, there have been a lot of media reports about Fontis and Pinnell and the controversy around that program. And when I looked at Fontis and Pinnell in terms of ed reports, they do not agree with this, well, I shouldn't say agree. It says this program does not include complex tasks, et cetera. For grades kindergarten, one, two, this program does not meet the expectation for text quality and complexity and alignment to the standards. So, I'm wondering in terms of where's the district with this adoption of this program that is so controversial nationally?
Are you speaking about Fontis and Pinnell's curriculum materials or the BAS itself? The Benchmark Assessment System is, is the, the resource that we use from Fontis-Pinnell. That gives us longitudinal data versus the curriculum resources that they.
Okay, so you're not using the curriculum resources?
I would have to double-check that with Dr. Brady, but yeah, I, you know, like.
Okay.
And, and we, we historically have looked at ed reports as a part of the curriculum review. We also do benchmarking against other curriculum resources. I know we speak about that a lot in SPA. So, we do a lot of deep dive into the effectiveness of curricular resources before we roll them out, so.
No, I appreciate that. It was just a wondering, like I said, it's not, it's not my expertise, so I wanted to throw it out there. With regard to, now let's move to the other end of high school graduation in the CNA summary. And this was actually pointed out by a community member who came to a couple of our meetings and said, hey, your high school graduation rates are pretty low, and they said, on the website, it's showing up at like 80-some percent. But when I'm looking here, it's above 90% for almost every school, with the exception of Starkweather Academy.
Correct.
So, Starkweather Academy is very concerning. So, what's happening there in terms of additional support for the kids?
Yep. So, what we're looking at there is, I know they have advisory and things like that, but we're really looking at the instructional strategies that are put in place at Starkweather. We're looking at some additional supports there as well. Starkweather is our most at-risk building in the district because students that attend Starkweather Academy have historically not been successful in some way, shape, or form, and that's what takes them there. We're also looking at revising and shifting that program as we look ahead to become, we're doing a, a study over the next year with the potential goal of allowing ninth-grade students to attend Starkweather Academy because we don't want students to have to fail to go to a school or feel as though they've failed. When you look in, historically, my historical perspective before coming to PCCS is I, I have worked in a number of statewide organizations that were launched to support students who are significantly at risk, who had dropped out of school, out of middle school or high school. We want to catch students early so that they don't feel as though they've had a pattern of, of a lack of success because we want success earlier. So, the earlier we catch, the, the better we can support. That's a social, emotional thing. It's also about layering on those SEL lessons at Starkweather, helping build that grit and perseverance, which is a huge piece when we look at success in post-secondary programming as well as in the, I call it life, right? In, in, in college, careers, or whatever choice, military. Grit and perseverance is huge. And so, oftentimes, what will happen is if a student rolls up a number of experiences where they haven't felt successful, they give up easily and they stop trying. And we don't ever want any of our young people to get there, so that's why we're building, we're building, working intentionally to build grit and perseverance skills. It's also written into our learner profile when we look at the. It's also written into our learner profile, when we look at the, the different aspects of the learner profile. When we look at some of those pieces, which, we'll do a full community rollout of the learner profile in August this year.
And so, I'm excited to see that you have student success coaches that are being hired at every level. Is Starkweather going to get extra or additional?
Yep, we've, we've talked with the Starkweather folks, and we've looked at, are we going to add some, uh, layered supports on and stuff? But what we're waiting to do is see what, what the students who are coming in and what the students there this coming fall will need. It's the same thing that we're looking at as we look at the virtual academy, because those programs are very specialized and they, we, we need to get the data on the students in, in, in those seats, because there's, it's a smaller number. It's a small sample size, hundred-and-fifty students. When you look at a hundred-and-fifty students, you have to look really deeply at their individualized needs. And so, that work will take place over the summer and into the fall, as we look at the students that are be, that are enrolled there.
Okay, so, expect changes in the support and instructional practices at Starkweather, is that what I'm hearing?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, we also looked at some of the engagement strategies. One of the things that worked through the board process recently was an elective course at Starkweather, the American Film Studies, to look at engagement and look at how we better support literacy strategies through, uh, an engaging, um, uh, instructional or, um, curricular program like, uh, American Film Studies course. And so, it's, it's about doing things differently.
Thank you, and I actually emailed some questions earlier, uh, so Dr. Merritt did respond to those. I don't know if it's worth mentioning, if you wanna share, uh, with the Panorama data, that the numbers weren't as high as I had anticipated in terms of that data set.
Yep, we saw a much higher data set in the fall, and there's a number of factors that that is attributed to. And, um, one of which is honestly, survey fatigue for our young people. So, in the spring, we administered not just the, um, Panorama survey, but also the K-12 Insight Survey. The MI-FI was administered across the state this year, and so the MI-FI is the Michigan, um, it used to be called the YRBS when I was back in the classroom, so that's what I still refer to. It's the Risk, Youth Risk Behavior Survey. So, it gives us data to do our health programming, and also, um, additional mental health supports, like, um, counseling, social work, all those types of things. And I'm, I'm blanking on what MI-FI actually stands for right now. But there were, there were, and we did an ELA survey to get feedback from our students about some of the ELA coursework that they'd like. So, there, there was definitely a survey fatigue with our students, which also informs us, as we look ahead to next year, about how do we maybe do some things differently, how do we stagger them differently, how do we, you know, like streamline some of it? We're also meeting with the folks from Panorama to talk about what we saw over our implementation, this was our pilot year, and then, um, get some additional support from what others nationally have done to, to increase engagement with, um, those programs as well. We've designed an intentionality into providing time during the school day for students to take that. That was also disrupted a bit with some of the things that happened with families dropping off kids late and different things at some of the different levels. It took place in advisory in the middle school, we saw a drop in some of the middle school numbers. And then in high school, we did it during ESA, and there was some disruption based on the fact that teachers were using that time to provide really intensive supports for students. So, there was a lot, there were a handful of hiccups this spring, but we certainly will get back on track on ensuring that we have high levels of student engagement and student, um, implementation, or, you know, students taking the survey in the fall.
And has it been connected to MyStar yet, or is that still a challenge?
We're good.
Oh, excellent.
We're good.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's it for me.
Thanks.
Mr. Wilson?
Uh, thank you, so, when we look at our first strategic goal, it's to increase achievement for all students and then close the achievement gap, right? And, uh, when we talk about equity, often, you know, we talk about how, yes, we have a strong focus on closing the gap, but we also have a strong focus on helping those students who are achieving, helping them continue to, to, to achieve, right? Equity means everybody gets what they need to be successful.
That's correct.
So, can you just talk briefly about what, how some of these initiatives are helping? The students who are doing well, but needs to be challenged and continuously challenged. Can you talk about how, how these initiatives are gonna help in, in that regard?
Absolutely, well, some of these are more specifically targeted to our students of them, with the, with the, with, with the gaps, but let's just talk about programming in general. So, we have very intentional and very extensive programming to support our students who have the greatest, or, we, in, we have a program called the TAG Program, Talented and Gifted Program. But we've also done a lot of work over the last couple of years around personalized professional development and layering on additional professional development to support, um, things like universal design for learning and differentiated instruction, so that within the classroom, we can really support, um, students and push them in their learning. Students who are high, high-achieving students, who have a number of areas where they're gifted and talented, and, uh, and you'll, you'll hear my bias come out here, because I always say, every student is gifted in some areas and talented in some areas, and struggles in some areas. That is true of our highest-achieving students, and it's true of our students who struggle to unlock content. So, when we look at it though, we look at, in the classroom, what do we do to provide those additional supports? As we look at our programming, what do we do programming programmatically to provide those additional supports? So, when we look at tag programming and things like that. Additionally, we're doing some work in, as a teaching and learning team, looking at ways to expand some of the programming within our buildings, because we know that there are students who, um, don't wanna leave their home school to go to a tag program. So, how do we better support, um, more honors-based courses, more, more of those types of courses within home schools, so that more students have more access to programming? We have an extensive AP program at the high school. In fact, um, I would say, and I'm, we'll have to do some research on this, but we may have one of the, the, um, you know, largest AP programs in the state, if not the nation, right? When you look at some of our programming. We try to look at ways to support students in whatever area they're gifted in. The Arts Academy, so, gifted and talented doesn't just mean math and science, it could mean arts. It could mean physical education, it can mean a variety of things. So, how do we provide those programs? Building the Business Academy, starting the Early Middle College, all of those things help support and extend our students' learning.
Great, and then my, uh, second question was around, uh, let's see here. So, I'm looking at the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, Climate, and Culture Specialists.
Yep.
Uh, and it really, you know, lifts up that they'll be focusing on developing inclusive and innovative learning methods, so it feels very, very much around, uh, the academic piece. Can you talk a little bit about how, you know, this position will focus also on addressing bias?
Yep.
Um, because that, that's one of the things we heard a lot from our students, is that they did not feel supported often, uh, by, by the teachers, and so we know that that's something we have to address. I would say also though, obviously, that, you know, we had a group of teachers who came in to show their support, uh, for the students, uh, recently, and so we, we know that we have a lot of amazing educators in the district, but we also know that we have some educators in the district that have strong biases, um, and, and so how are we planning to address that?
Yep, and that's, uh, through the work of Dr. Lilly and, and members of this team, as well as all of our work. This isn't just the diversity, equity, and inclusion work, for just the, you know, folks who have diversity, equity, and inclusion in their job title. This is all of our work. And when we look at, um, these folks in specific, in, in particular, the Climate and Culture Specialists, the innovative learning methods that we're talking about are culturally responsive practices, but it's, it's targeted as much, if not more, around culture and climate than it is around, it's not about, I'm gonna come in and help, help you learn a new math strategy. It's about, how am I gonna come in and help support culturally responsive instructional strategies? The work that we've done with Goldie Muhammad and, and Zaretta Hammond, and all of, all of that type of work, all of the work around, um, um, restorative practices, all of that is engaged here. As well as those last two bullets on here, Elementary Student Success Coaches and the Deans of Student Success, they're highly, that's, that's an area of focus for them as well. So, looking at helping support building-wide culture and climate, classroom cu- culture and climate, district-wide culture and climate, especially individualized culture and climate. Who do I have in the building as a young person who knows me, sees me, and knows about me, and cares about me? Because in, I know that I've said this, and I'll continue to say this, when you look at research from Harvard and the, um, at the Institute for Excellence in Education, what you see is, one person, one person makes a difference in kids' life. One person who believes deeply in them, cares about them, says, "I see you, I care about you, and I'm gonna be here, and I'm not gonna let you fail. And together, we're gonna make it through, and we're gonna be successful." And that's what all of this is about. Every one of the people who work in our buildings makes a significant difference for young people. Sometimes it's the bus driver who picks me up in the morning, that's my one person. Sometimes it's a custodial staff, or a, a food service, a nutrition services worker, that's the person who's my person. But what we need to continually do, and we are continuously working on this, is making sure that every person that I encounter in our buildings, in our classrooms, in our, in anything that we touch as PCCS is my person. So, I feel like I don't have one person, I have a cadre of folks just there for me.
Yep, thank you.
Um, so, most of my questions have been answered. I do wanna say, I really appreciated the way you presented this tonight, where we got all that data ahead of time, and then, we kinda focused on what we're going to do to address the issue, as opposed to, and it's not that Mr. Royal doesn't have a wealth of knowledge about all of the things, but what we're going to do to address the gaps.
If you would like to at any time, come and sit with the nerdy people in Teaching and Learning and talk about it for hours, you're welcome. Right? Bring you a hundred charts, or we can, we can do this this way.
We'll leave that for Member Kehoe.
Definitely an intentional effort to take your feedback that we've heard over the past presentations.
But that, but I, I really did appreciate that, because that's, that's really what we need to know, is we have these gaps, what are we going to do? And so, my question is kind of along the same lines as other people have asked earlier about other things that we were doing. Like, you know, in the radio station, do we have what we need to make our students successful? So, you want, you know, the student success coaches, the teachers on a special assignment, do, are you going to have enough of personnel to make the difference? Like, so they're, they don't have a huge caseload, so they can actually make the difference?
Yes, yes, and, and that is, it's layering on strategies above the strategies that we already implement, right? So, this isn't in place of, this is in addition to. So, um, a, a high school student success coach does not take the place of a counselor or a social worker. This is in addition to. So, yes, this will, and, and this will get us a good lens into what's working for our students, right? And, and as we layer on all of these additional supports, I'm confident that when I stand up here, I'm highly confident that when I stand up in here with you mid-year next year, toward, and, and at the end of the year next year, that I'm not gonna tell the same story.
So, if this is like highly successful,
Yep.
are you going, will you then like ramp it up, or?
Well, yes, we'll look at, obviously, we have to look at the needs. And the, the most important thing is, is looking at the data. What, what is the data showing us the needs are? So, if we're highly successful improving tier-one instruction at the elementary level, we'll see a decrease in the need for intervention, because we'll be providing, you know, our, our data will show that less kids will have to be taken in any kind of pullout or any of those specialized programs or individualized programs, because they're getting what they need in other places. And as we continue to build all the skillsets of our students academically, socially, emotionally, behaviorally, that's where we wanna be, right? So, um, well, but to your point, if we need to ramp it up, yeah, we'll absolutely do that. We'll come back and we'll say, "This is what's working," and we'll also selectively abandon things.
I was gonna say that piece.
And select, yep.
When you look at the, uh, general fund itself, uh, to Ms. Piaz, eighty-two to eighty-five percent of our funds are used for salaries.
Right.
And so, when we are able to utilize federal funds, but making an intentional effort to align general fund resources, so now you're looking at two-point-six million dollars in the general fund that we're devoting to this work. And if we see that we are actually studying the outcomes, and we're getting the bang for the buck, then we need to look at other things that are in the general fund to say, "What do we abandon?" And again, not focus on the federal or, uh, additional supports, but what are we putting our money or our resources to, to help the kids with the most urgent needs?
Yep, Debbie and I have a running joke. Our running joke is that she brings the money in, and I spend it, so. But I spend it based on what our data says will, will work for students. So, I'm not gonna spend it frivolously, I'm gonna spend it based on what is working. And we're gonna selectively abandon those things that are not. And by that, I mean, we'll take those dollars and reinvest them and double down on the things that are.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we are down to E, which is Susan Schametz. I do not see any of the box, so we will move on. Uh, so we are on to F then, discussion. First up, we have M A S B Board Self-Evaluation Process. Uh, so, I did contact the M A S B, and they have given me a link for the Board Self-Evaluation, uh, process, which I will be sending out tomorrow. Uh, we have then two weeks to complete it. Um, two weeks, because, well, they have a, a timeframe. Also, because we have a meeting with Karen Cross on the twenty-sixth. So, if we send out the, if I send out the link tomorrow, then it closes in two weeks, and they will be able to get the data no later than the twentieth, um, which will then give Ms. Cross about a week to look at it and prepare for our next meeting. So, the link will go out, it's kind of important, important that you do it. We also had to kind of wait, because with that window and Mr. Kehoe out of the country, uh, we didn't want him to have a chance to be able to, um, not have to get it done in minutes. So, that link will go out tomorrow, um, and then do it so that we can talk to Ms. Cross. Um, and then the next part is the Board Officer Positions, so last.
President McQuinn, before you move on to that, with the Board Self-Evaluation, do we have access to, or, I'm sure we can find it, but will Karen Cross have access to her previous data set?
That's a good question, um.
Could we get that from M A S B as well? Because we've been doing M A S B self-eval for the last five years.
Did they ever send it to you the last time?
No, they sent it to the facility that.
Oh, so you, we never got it?
We went over it and.
We went over it, but, um.
Yeah, I don't remember we went over it.
But as you talk to M A S B, I'm wondering if we could just get them to give us the data set for the last three years, so we can look at where we were, how much we've grown, um, whatever you think is best last three years. Yeah, that's fair.
And we could also look internally to see our agendas and our minutes.
Okay.
Ms. Robinson, we can check it out. From those, uh, in services.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
And we have time for that, 'cause, uh, we're gonna do the, the survey in two weeks, and then it's gonna be a week before the data set is released, so.
They're pretty responsive.
Okay.
Um, M A S B is pretty responsive when you ask them a question. All right, I will actually, I will do that. And then the next one is the Board Officer Positions, um, which we had discussed last month, last week, two weeks ago, um, for the future. So, that meeting is coming up the nineteenth. Um, so, we have three weeks until that. But, um, so who is, who is showing some interest? Mr. Wilson?
Sure, I'll jump in, uh, so I'm interested in, uh, the president's, uh, role. And, uh, just to give a little background on what I'd like to focus on, why I'm interested, so, first and foremost, just building on the work we've done and increasing, uh, board efficiency, specifically focusing on the most critical and essential work of the board, uh, which we've identified, safety, closing the gap, equity, um, and I'm sure there's, there's others. Uh, obviously, we're going in, into the first full, full year of implementation for the Dynamic Plan. That first year is so critical from a board oversight standpoint, so I think that needs to be a, a major focus. Also, board metrics. Um, you know, I think we've started to really talk about the board as a, as a whole, how we, uh, monitor and, and how we track our successes, and how we focus on the work of policy, but then also oversight simultaneously. So, I think that that's, uh, gonna be important in the next year. And then continuing the work we've done around strengthening community relations would be the second. I think, you know, kudos to, to the entire board. We, we saw some pretty, um, uh, significant increases in how the community sees our accessibility, and I think that there's an opportunity to continue that work, specifically focused on building a culture around transparency and mutual respect, uh, with the community. I think we have a. I think we have an opportunity to, to, you know, really dig into that work. Also increasing outreach, communication, visibility, and access to the board. I think that that's- And then lastly, I'm, I would be excited to, to strengthen our working relationship with the administration, you know, shared vision. So what, what does a successful working relationship look like? Let's create that shared vision together. And then, you know, kudos to you as, as president. We're coming out of two years of, of, of a lot of challenges. And I think there's an opportunity, as you come out of those two years, to really learn from them. You know, because when you're in the heat of the battle, when there's a lot of tension, when there's a lot of stress, when there's, you know, six-hour meetings, seven-hour meetings, you know, it's, it's natural to clash, right? But what did we learn from that? And, and how do we set up systems to make sure that that doesn't happen again? I think that that would be important. And then answering the questions of, how does the administration maximize the Board of Education? The talents, the resources, the expertise that it brings? And then vice versa, how does the Board of Education give stronger leadership and, and stronger support to administration as well? So, so that, that, that would be some of what I would want to focus on if, if elected to that position.
You've got my vote.
Yeah, that's impressive.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else interested in being president?
Not after that.
All right. Vice President?
I'd like to express interest in the Vice President's role. After Sean, Trustee Wilson's, I don't, I don't think I have anything I want to add to that. I'll tell you my personal reason for wanting to sit in the seat. I'm not entitled only, but to really work, to continue our work, but really to use this position to build with the end in mind and put things in place to really sustain the progress that we're making as a team of eight. And so I would be honored and privileged to serve in that capacity, along with my colleagues, and to serve. Trustee Wilson.
Excellent. And just to let you know, I'm, I'm more than willing to support you doing whatever you need. Like, to get you going.
Oh, that's fantastic.
More than willing to do that. As I'm sure Ms. Sedu is also more than willing. So, Mr. Christensen, any interest in being a board officer?
You know, I thought about this, and I will say, at this time, I, I'm, I'm not interested in, in applying or putting my hat, or name in the hat for a position. You know, with the Student Voice and Action Committee and the Finance and Operations Committee, I feel I'm serving this board and this work in that capacity.
I just wanted to check with you since, you know, you, you are for sure going to be here for the next year.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
You're right.
But yeah, I totally get it. In addition, you have two younger children
Right.
who are very active.
They are. And I am, I am a bus driver too and from all of their activities, among other things, so.
Yes. All right. So Mr. Kehoe is not here, but he has always been willing to be treasurer. So we'll just slot him right in because that's what happens when you miss a meeting.
Yeah.
He'll lose. And then somebody will need to be stepping up to do the, the jab of the secretary.
So, you know, I, I would like to put my name in that as-
Fantastic.
Patty, President McCoy, you've been hinting clearly that we are stepping down from these positions for the last couple of months, I think. And with the additional time that I have, I just wanted to think about, what other positions are we not maximizing in terms of going beyond compliance, like the secretary role? And so one of the things I'd like to try is to move, reimagine, reinvent that role to go beyond the compliance of signing documents and approving minutes. And I started to think about, well, what does that look like? And so, remember Wilson, you know, I just listened to you in terms of increasing communications with the community. And at some point, we had talked about a newsletter, a board newsletter. And that's one of the things that I'd like to propose. But, you know, all of this is again with the whole board having a conversation. What does that look like? And reimagining all these roles in, in terms of the future. So just an interest, but again, this is collective work. It is not something that I would own and something that I would control. It is all with collective decision-making.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Got that, got that taken care of. As a reminder, we do have a closed session tomorrow night for superintendent evaluation. I sent some things out last Thursday to you. Please have those reviewed and ready to go. And then after that, of course, we have our next meeting, the 19th, which is the Organizational Board Meeting. And then we do have a closed session on security, the 20th. Do you have questions? Let's try to get those in ahead of time to make sure that they are covered by the attorney letter. So that's the 20th. And then the 26th, of course, is our Board Governance with Ms. Cross.
Real quick for tomorrow's meeting, did we get the evidence, the artifacts, or are they still coming?
Yes, we'll release them hopefully tonight. If, as we talked about, there was, at a shift, my normal process would be that I get my self-evaluation first, where I would have gone over that information yesterday. And then you do the final document, the final evaluation, but in conversation on Thursday. President McCoy and Vice President Sedu suggested we do that all in one night. So I'm trying to get you ahead of time some information, and we'll try to do it simultaneously. We've talked about the importance of knowing we have three hours and just making sure that we efficiently, I'll go through my evaluation, we'll do domain at a time, and then give a reflection. So try to release, I got all the artifacts there. Just finished the self-eval today. And we'll release it when we get out of here in the next couple of hours, hopefully. And then I'll give you tomorrow.
We'll get out of here in the next couple of minutes.
No, we'll, we'll get out in a minute, and then I'll be here for the next couple of hours.
Just for people who are like, wait a minute, two more hours, is it? All right. So I feel like we had something else we wanted to talk about, but I've lost it.
I think, you already mentioned it. We were going to just go over the dates, but you have just gone over that.
Yeah, we, we got the dates.
And then follow, oh, that's next, follow-up questions.
And then, yeah. And then we also have, once we've done the evaluation, we're going to want to start setting our dates for the next year. So we had talked about, like, setting up our calendars ahead of time, and we did talk to Ms. Cross about that. So she's, she's willing to help us facilitate setting some of our meetings up. And, you know, our evaluation things, setting them ahead of time so they're the priority as opposed to we get out our calendars and try to take a look. All right. So follow-up board questions from our last meeting. Members to do ask for an update on administrative guidelines to show where the gaps are and how the guidelines are being updated.
Is it still legal?
Yeah.
I know we've reviewed some, but we have some finalized, but it's still legal. So we said, we'll keep that on until that is finalized.
And then Members to do requested a summary of the data from the K-12 School Climate Survey by school and level.
It's still coming.
We did, in board notes, did we, by level, this past week?
With a level?
We did. With schools, remember we do, from this level, you do aggregate. So we don't, we give you that information. We, we provided it by the grade level, but it's across. You don't identify the specific schools.
Just to clarify, we provided the comprehensive reports, but not the grade level. Those will come this week.
Right, that's what I thought. There's a note in there saying that that was coming.
For sure. Yep. And that will be in board notes this week.
Okay, perfect.
And so you had a question earlier about the warranty, but we got that answered. Does anybody else have a question about, that we need to put on for next time? So does anybody have anything else? All right. Well, then, seeing as we've come to the end of our agenda, we will adjourn the meeting. Have a lovely evening. Thank you so much. And I'll see the board members tomorrow. Yes, 9:39.